Tuesday, January 2nd. We will come to order. Happy New Year, everyone. We are going to do the bond release quickly and like very quickly, so.
Actually, I have one announcement to make prior to that, and I forgot to just go U N in that. We have hired a new staff planner. She's here tonight, so I'd like to introduce Monica Gregoire. Monica comes to us from Groundworks USA. She has a Master of Arts in Urban and Environmental Policy and Planning. She's also an elected member of the Chelmsford Planning Board. She's serving on that term right now, so Monica is here tonight.
Excellent. Welcome, great.
Today's her first day, so it's her.
And quickly again, my name is Monica Gregoire, and I just wanted to say hello to everyone and formally introduce myself and just tell you that I am excited to be here and I look forward to working with you.
Good. Excellent. Welcome, welcome.
Okay, so the bond release. Tom Zarico developed the subdivision called The Glade. It's a five lot definitive subdivision. Thirty-three thousand two hundred and fifty-dollar roadway bond was posted at the beginning of the project. There was a partial release of ten thousand dollars previously. Tim Willett has submitted a updated spreadsheet. He is recommending additional eleven thousand two hundred and fifty dollars be released, which will leave eleven thousand dollars for conveyance, maintenance, and repair, as well as the final as-built plans. Now, Tom believes he has turned in the final as-built plans, and I did not get any further update from Tim today.
That's okay. I appreciate you following that.
Well, let's do the eleven and change because if we're gonna have a longer discussion, you're gonna have to sit down, so.
No discussion from me.
Any questions from the board?
More motion?
Yeah, please.
Make a motion to release the bond in the amount of eleven thousand two hundred and fifty as to The Glade subdivision, leaving a balance of eleven thousand dollars.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you, folks.
Okay. The one other thing is, we have the agendas. The RCG project is going to be carried over and not heard tonight, so we just have the one public hearing and we have the discussion, okay, yeah, the discussion and town meeting bylaws. So we'll, the first item is varsity wireless. We, there was an individual, if I may beg your indulgence here, who has to leave early tonight and wanted to speak on this. Would you mind, has to leave by quarter after seven, would you mind letting that person speak first, or would you prefer to, you know, take the floor first? Okay, if that's the case, then I think the person who had to leave early is welcome to come up and speak.
Thank you. This was an email that I sent to everybody, and I just wanted to read it out loud.
What was your name, sir?
Lou Ferraro, One Eighty-Eight Vestway in North Andover, Mass.
Thank you.
As a members, for me and my wife, I wrote it, as members of the North Andover community for over thirty-one years, and I've always appreciated what town officials have done. I do appreciate your hard work. I know it's not easy doing what you do. We have to say that the vote to approve a cell tower on Foster Street is very disappointing and unacceptable. You have presented with many good alternatives, okay, that are much more acceptable to the residents of North Andover who live in the Foster Street area. The Foster Street area already has power lines, gas lines, and now you want to put a cell tower. These things all lower our property values, along with making this area less attractive in general, which is a beautiful area with Foster Farm, with all the bikes and all the people that travel that road every day. Therefore, I am asking you to reverse your decision and do the people's will, who you serve. Thanks for your consideration and help in this very important matter. Sincerely, Lou and Pat Ferraro. Now, I sent this to everybody, and I'm not picking on anybody, but no one responded. That disappoints me as well. So you could do what you want here, but this is one guy that knows a lot of people in town, a lot. I've been there thirty-one years. I don't come to complain, but you need to do the people's will. By the way.
By the way, we haven't voted on anything yet.
Well, someone voted on it, either the last.
But it wasn't us.
Okay, I didn't say, well, it was the other planning board or whatever. They voted on it and they approved it. And the other thing, too, is I'd like to mention, I'm in the internet business. I work for a global internet provider called Telia Carrier. I deal with people all over the globe, China, Russia, you name it. My cell phone has to work where I live. It works fine. I've never had a call dropped where I live, at One Eighty-Eight Vestway in North Andover. So to put that tower there, I don't know what you're putting it there for, but it makes absolutely no sense to me. That's all I have to say, and I want to thank you again for putting me first in your time, and I will leave you in peace. Thank you.
Unless you have questions for me.
I think we're all good, thank you. Yeah. So where do we stand, Gene, in terms of?
So on December twentieth, the Z B A did approve four to one, the requested variances that were before them. At the last meeting, the planning board had requested confirmation from National Grid that they would not lease for commercial purposes, specifically the substation parcel at four oh nine Foster Street, but they actually submitted documentation that all of their assets on Foster Street, they would not lease for commercial purposes, which, that memo is in your packet. In addition, the board received several more resident comments, one of which was just read tonight. One came in late this afternoon, so you have a hard copy of that. There was a letter submitted from Attorney Robert F. Murphy, representing Albert P. Manzi III of Ten Foster Street, included in your packet as an opposition letter. The peer review from the Z B A application was submitted, as well as the follow-up memo from the peer reviewer regarding four oh nine Foster Street, which essentially was trumped by the National Grid memo. We spoke earlier in the process of a shot clock of a hundred and fifty days for rendering final action. That brings us to January thirteenth, conservatively, I believe, which is a Saturday. Your next regularly scheduled board meeting is on Tuesday, January sixteenth, so just a few days past that. So other than the National Grid memo, the applicants have not submitted any further information on the application.
Okay. So would you have any other further comments or clarifications or points you want to raise at this point?
No, not really. The only action item we had was to confirm with National Grid, whether or not they're, when they said they didn't want to lease property, whether it was just, you know, the area near the substation or the entirety of the property, as Gene said. We submitted the letter with confirmation that it is the entirety of the property, so those, those are out. That was the only action item we had. Otherwise, you've heard from your consultant in terms of confirmation of the information that we've submitted on behalf of Verizon and A T and T concerning the extent of their gap, their gaps in coverage, the scientific evidence around that, confirmed by your consultant, the minimum height of ninety-seven feet for Verizon and ninety-seven feet for A T and T confirmed, meaning Verizon at ninety-seven, A T and T above that at, at one oh seven, which brings the total tower height to one-ten, with the appurtenances for the monopine at a hundred and fifteen feet. The only clarification I would offer, as far as the, the variances granted go from the Z B A, is that they granted it for the one hundred and fifteen foot to the top of the, the faux branches, as, as we'd amended the application and have offered to amend here. So in terms of what we're asking the board to ultimately vote on, it's that one hundred and ten-foot tower with the one hundred and fifteen foot to the top of the faux branches. We had lengthy discussions concerning alternative technologies at the last hearing. We've explained, and our radio frequency engineers explained why they're, they don't work here. We've talked about the lack of infrastructure in the area. All of that was confirmed by your consultant as well. And we've talked about why there aren't alternatives in the area and demonstrated that, and we've talked about why this is the most appropriate location on the property in terms of overall balancing, in terms of screening to the majority of the properties, to the extent feasible. And now the location is somewhat locked in, given the, the grant of the variances by the Z B A. We continued, as was the board's preference, to allow the Z B A to, to act. They've done that. They've granted the necessary variances. We would request that the board grant the special permit relief for the facility.
Okay, any questions from the board?
I have a question. Just looking over the coverage maps once again, just in terms of really defining whether there's a need, there, the, the white area is defined as having a signal strength that is less than, what, ninety-five decibel-milowatts, I think, is the, the term. Can you clarify or quantify, is there, say, a, within that area, there's obviously coverage as a signal, is there some kind of statistical analysis in terms of probability of a call remaining or dropping? I, I just don't, I, I look at the data and I say, well, there is some signal there, but I don't know how reliable that is. Do you have any data for, perhaps Verizon has some data on, on that, in terms of statistically your likelihood of dropping calls?
Sure. And honest, Martin, Lavin is the radio frequency engineer from C squared to weigh in as well, but in terms of how the, generally the signal strength standards work for each of the carriers, they may differ slightly, but what it is, is that is their, the signal strength that they use or that threshold is to ensure reliability so that you don't get the dropped call. So yes, is there, in some of that area that's white, is there some signal? There may be some, in some other areas, there may be none. But what, when you fall below the carrier design threshold, what that means is that it's no longer reliable. So you may be able to make a call in some instances, you may not. You may be able to have a meaningful data, data session, you may not. They have statistical indicators that they will look at in terms of, for calls, for dropped calls, for data, for things like throughput, latency, and other issues related to that. All of that goes into the mix in terms of the overall analysis of whether or not, whether or not a particular signal strength is reliable, whether or not an area is receiving it. In this case, the scientific data shows that it's, it's below that reliability threshold for those carriers, so that you may have some signal, but again, it's just not reliable all the time, or to a, to a statistical value, great enough value that they call it adequate service to meet customer demands and expectations. Martin, do you have any?
I have three questions.
Yep.
So, the first question I have is about the National Grid site. I saw your letter and National Grid's response. So in watching the tape from the zoning board, our consultant from Isotrop, if I, if I got it correctly, said that in his experience, National Grid had accommodated these type of additional uses in the past. The letter clearly says no, but it brought to mind an experience that we had here in the town with National Grid for use of a piece of property adjacent to their power station by Stevie's Pond, where when, when asked, National Grid's answer was no, because the property the town was interested in turned out to be owned by National Grid, and the answer, much like your letter, was no. Now, as a result of that, given that National Grid is a very large company, I mean, you know that, the town spent some time working with National Grid, a number of months, and once the town had an opportunity to have a good discussion with National Grid, which took that time, the answer changed to essentially, oh, okay, now we understand what you really want. We understand it really isn't an impact to us, and the answer is yes. So my first question to you is, my understanding is you've spent a couple of years working with the property owner, where you currently plan to put the tower. Our consultant said that the National Grid site was not, not an ideal site, it was the ideal site. And just looking at the dates on the letter, you've spent a week working with National Grid. What is your assessment of spending, maybe not two years, working with National Grid, like you did with the property owner you're working with now, but spending more than a week to communicate to National Grid what you're really looking for? I mean, the basis of their rebuttal was to say that the power system is critical infrastructure under the Department of Homeland Security definition. Well, D H S has eighteen critical infrastructure sectors. One, of course, is power and the grid, which National Grid was referring to, but another one of the eighteen critical infrastructure sectors is communications, which includes cell towers. So there really is a like use here, where it's critical infrastructure cell tower, along with critical infrastructure power grid. So my question to you is, what are, what are the possibilities of spending more than a week working with National Grid to evaluate what our consultant said was the ideal site?
First of all, we'd had conversations with National Grid going back for some time, including the initial site assessment. So it's not just, it's not just a week. It was, we presented their final answer. You asked for confirmation, and we went back and, and got it, in, in terms of those discussions. Second, in terms of David's reference to, Mr. Maxon's reference to kind of their historical allowance for it, I mean, certainly that had been our experience as well. There has been, our understanding is a change in policy from when I started doing this in ninety-nine or two thousand, David, you know, a little bit earlier than that. So there has been a significant change in their policy. So now the answers we're getting now are no, when in nineteen ninety-nine or two thousand, you might have gotten a maybe or, or even a yes. As it relates to, you know, critical infrastructure, I, is I understand their policy and understand what they have communicated, their answer would be, that is, the communications part of the infrastructure, the cell phone, is not their business and is not their responsibility to safeguard or deal with. And so from, from that perspective, although they're both on that same list, I would expect they would say, our job is to protect the critical infrastructure of the utility, and that's what we're going to do, and that's what we're doing, doing here. Based on the, the conversations we've had, leading up to the, the last hearing and leading up to today, and not only our discussion, because Mr. Maxon took it upon himself and called Mr. Perella, who issued the letter, and followed up and came to the same conclusion, our expectation is that is not a policy that's going to change, and, and I'm not, I think, I think I might be familiar, having seen one article, that we kind of vaguely talked about something that happened here with, with National Grid, making use, making an allowance for some recreational or path type of use. I think that is fundamentally different than what we're asking for, what we asked for here, and that's why the answer is going to be no.
They're clearly different uses. The example I was giving was more to the point that with a large entity like National Grid, investing time to really pursue the question made a difference. And I, I take your answer, and I appreciate you providing that feedback. You know, from a critical infrastructure perspective, you could also make the argument that by co-locating a cell tower, critical infrastructure, National Grid could be in a better position to seek the sort of critical infrastructure protection funding because of co-located critical infrastructure. And it's just one example of how, you know, a discussion over time can discover mutual interests that may not be apparent with an initial question. So that was really the point I was making. So my second question, when I listened to the zoning board meeting and watched it on the video, one of the butters asked about the tower at Johnson Street, and their understanding was that the Johnson Street Tower, which is quite tall, did not have a Verizon or A T and T antenna array, and asked if, if the Johnson Tower, given the height and location, not just distance from Foster, but height and topography, if that could provide any of the needed coverage for the gap. And I think I heard our consultant respond that he had not been aware of the Johnson Tower. I mean, I, I wrote down in my notes here, not aware of this tower. And I checked the report, and at least in my check, I, I didn't see the analysis for coverage from the Johnson Tower for this gap area. Is there an analysis for the Johnson, the existing Johnson Tower, at the height of that tower, is there an analysis for that as an alternative for coverage?
Well, the, the overall top height wouldn't be available anyway, but it's not included, but it is not, first of all, even given the height, the, the overall distance from this site, or from the area sought to be covered, particularly to the east, as well as the fact that the Johnson Tower is not that far from the tower that A T and T and Verizon are on, would provide vastly redundant coverage to that site, so you wouldn't have both of those sites on air anymore.
Right. So I think our concern is not whether or not there's redundant coverage. I think our concern is whether or not an alternative is viable in terms of being available and providing coverage for a gap. So from my perspective, that's an analysis that we don't have. I, I take your perspective, and I appreciate it, but just in terms of reviewing the facts we have on hand, I don't have the analysis of potential coverage of the Johnson Tower as a potential viable alternative, which brings me to my third question. So I know that you started with a hundred and thirty-five feet, I think, and we're down to a hundred and ten, and I think that's an example of, or a hundred and fifteen.
Hundred and fifteen.
Yeah, thank you. And I think it's an example of working with the community and being flexible, and I appreciate that. I think everybody does appreciate that flexibility. But my question goes to the ninety-seven feet, or I think, to be accurate, it would be ninety-seven plus five. And I understand that your concern is that for two of your customers, both A T and T and Verizon, they both have to be at, at or above ninety-seven, which is what drives you to that one-ten plus five, is because they both want ninety-seven feet or higher. But from, from my perspective, although I understand that's a business concern of yours, a tower at ninety-seven plus five feet would still provide the opportunity for you to hang three antenna arrays. And so my question is this, do we have an analysis of the existing proposed location of the tower on Foster Street, but an analysis of what coverage would it provide, not at one-thirty-five, not at one-fifteen, but at ninety-seven? So in other words, so that we could see how much of the gap would be covered by an antenna at ninety-seven plus five? And we, we may have had that ninety-seven-foot analysis, but I just, I'm not sure about that.
You do. You have it for both, for A T and T and Verizon.
At ninety-seven.
At ninety-seven.
Right.
That was the, going back, it was the multicolored one.
Right.
And so that's, that's why it was multicolored, was to show those, those different height levels.
And so what, what degree of coverage do we achieve in addressing the gap by having an antenna, three antennas at ninety-seven feet and below?
Well, when you say, first, when you say three antennas, do you mean three carriers?
Well, my understanding was, the original hundred and thirty-five-foot tower had enough height to hang three, of five separate arrays, one above the other.
Right.
And that a hundred and fifteen had enough height to hang four arrays, one above the other. And so I am assuming that at ninety-seven plus five, you remove two, you'd have enough room to hang three antenna arrays. Now, I, I understand that you could only hang one of either A T and T or Verizon, because they both want ninety-seven feet or above.
Right.
But, but that's not my question. My question is, what does the analysis say for, to what degree can we address the coverage gap with an antenna that is limited to ninety-seven plus five feet?
You think he's asking if you can put A T and T and Verizon?
No, I'm, I'm not asking if you can put A T and T and Verizon at the same place. I know you can't, and I know they both want to be at, at least ninety-seven feet. I, I understand that. But I'm asking, if the tower is only ninety-seven plus five, to what degree can you address the gap in coverage?
Both eighteen, the, the analysis for both A T and T and Verizon is that ninety-seven is their, is their minimum, meaning, and, and that was verified by Mr. Maxon. So at eighty-seven feet, A T and T and, or Verizon, because one of them, if you limit it to ninety-seven, one of them goes at ninety-seven, one goes at eighty-seven, would reject the site as not meeting the coverage objective and wouldn't build it.
But, but that's a business decision, I guess.
It doesn't cover enough of the objective.
But, but my question is, what does the analysis say about how much of the gap would be covered by an antenna that is limited to ninety-seven plus five feet, meaning that only one of those two carriers would be on there, plus two other carriers below?
Well, no, what the analysis, what the analysis generally shows is that at eighty-seven and below, the likelihood of having any other carrier attach and co-locate there is extreme, is extremely limited. So you're talking about a one-carrier tower, but you have two that need it.
What, what is the, to what degree do you address the coverage gap with an antenna limited to ninety-seven plus five? How much of that gap will be filled?
I don't know that I have a numerical percentage. I mean, we have the.
Because I think that's a piece of assessing, assessing an alternative that would be important. So those are my three questions. I appreciate your patience.
I do have a follow-up to that question. I don't know if you want to wait till it's an apple, if you give it a follow-up, but.
Can I just address the second question?
Yeah, if you could just identify yourself in the record.
So, we, well, we explained to David Maxon at the last meeting, if you watched it, that the Chestnut Street, Johnson Street Tower is two-plus miles away from where our proposed facility is, and he, just off that information dismissed it as being a viable alternative, if you go back and look at it.
So I, I did hear that. I did watch that, but my level of comfort with going forward with a proposal like this, that would have such a significant impact on such a uniquely historical site, is that I don't want to rely on that type of analysis. And I respect the years of experience that you all have and our consultant, but I think it deserves what, what is the analysis, so we can see that on paper?
So your analysis of a site that's quarter-mile away from another site that Verizon's on, and how much would that work on this site that's two-plus miles away? And, you know, to be, that's why you guys have a consultant, to be able to advise, to, to offer that information.
And so I, I was struck that he, it's not that, he didn't say that he didn't do the analysis. He said in the meeting, he was not aware of that tower.
Because he was aware of Verizon.
So that means something different.
And he can see we're on a tower right next door, and that's the information.
You know, I, I think, at least in order for me to evaluate that, I, I hear what you're saying, there's another tower very close by. What's the difference in heights? What's the difference in topographies? What's the azimuth between? What's the difference in topographies? What's the azimuth between those two nearby towers? I don't have that. And all I'm asking for here is, you know, I think you've provided us with a lot of information. And of my three questions, this is one question that at least for me, I, I thought deserves a little more careful analysis so that we, not only we, but the town and the residents can see, okay, now we understand. Here's the analysis, this is an engineering document, we see the facts.
It's, it's in the shadow of the existing site. It's, and you're talking the wrong side of the gap. It's not like it's on the eastern side, where you'd be throwing coverage to the vast, to potentially throwing coverage to the, to the other side, that currently doesn't really have any. So it's not going to, I mean, Mr. Maxon said it, we've said it, it's not going to reach the two miles to the site and then the additional, you know, mile and a half or so to, to the east.
I saw and heard the way Mr. Maxon characterized it. He was caught unprepared, he was not aware of the tower. He gave, you know, and again, a wealth of professional experience, which I respect, but I, I'm just not that comfortable going with a sort of off-the-cuff response. And I think to sort of set it in context, part of what's driving this is that Johnson Street Tower is not any tower. It's a tower of substantial elevation. Now, that may prove to, to, to not overcome the distance and the proximity to the other tower, but, but I don't know that because I haven't seen it. What, what I'm trying to articulate here is that as a potential viable alternative, and it may be that it's not high potential, but as a potential viable alternative, I don't feel that we have the assessment of coverage of a gap to sort of meet the facts of the case.
Can I ask, just confirm something that I think we've already talked about, but Peter was asking about the 97 plus five. Is, is this the 97 map?
Yeah, but so, just, so Johnson is, the Johnson Street Tower is about there.
It's what?
Just eyeballing it, is roughly where the pointer is.
I can't see a pointer.
Blue.
Or you're...
No, that's, that's the existing, that's the site that AT&amp;T and, and...
So the Johnson Tower is not indicated on the map?
Because it's not an existing site for either one of them. It's in that location, it's where the pointer is.
But, but I'm saying it's not on the map, providing the analysis.
It doesn't need, well, first of all, what we're showing is the existing coverage. So there, you wouldn't, we wouldn't put a marker for a site that's not providing existing coverage. But if you look at the distance of the green that heads east towards the site, and it's all existing coverage, that would all be redundant coverage. And the site at that location would provide, by providing so much redundant coverage, would interfere with the coverage from the existing site. So neither carrier, and Martin can please correct me if I'm, allow you to confirm this, neither carrier would build the site in that location because it would interfere with the existing coverage.
But I think the point was not that they would build another tower. I think the point was that they would put an antenna on a, put an antenna on a tower of unusual height.
Right. Neither carrier would put it at that location, given the fact that they have, given where their existing coverage is.
Sure, but in this case, the tower is existing.
But it doesn't matter. There's two things about redundant coverage. One is, one, it's inefficient. Two, you actually can interfere with your own existing coverage. And when you're trying, if you were trying to cover from Johnson Street, all the way to the east and cover with that much redundant coverage, you're, you're going to, you're going to have interference problems with your existing site. So they wouldn't build it.
Excellent points.
But none of that would actually show up on a map.
Both deserving of engineering analysis.
Martin?
If we haven't performed an analysis on that, I mean, at that distance, it would have been just ruled out, out of hand, which is, I guess, exactly what you've said, you, we've already said. Yeah.
And that's why, look, if David was uncomfortable, we've done a lot with Mr. Maxon. If he felt he needed more information, I'm confident he would have, he would have said.
So if he had said at the meeting, yes, I'm aware of the Johnson Street Tower, and given the distance, but that's not what he said. What he said was, I was unaware of that tower. How far away is it? Oh, two miles? Well, that's probably too far. That just doesn't, I'm just telling you, I respect your experience. It does not give me the sense of comfort that we have done the engineering analysis of a potentially viable solution for this gap. And...
But your consultant was so comfortable with it that he didn't feel the need to request additional information?
Yeah, I, I don't know that's the case, given the context, at least of what I saw in the tape. So.
So my question is, as I recall from one of the early meetings, that it is possible, when building a new tower, to increase the height if you plan for it in advance, correct?
Correct.
So, and we haven't, we're still in the public hearing. I have no idea how anybody's going to vote on any of this, but hypothetically, if, if you were granted 97 plus five feet, with the opportunity to build in the future, to go up as the tree coverage potentially grows, that is feasible, correct?
Well, I mean, from a construction standpoint, it'd be feasible, but it doesn't...
I'm not saying whether you want to do that, but I'm saying from a construction standpoint, yes.
But that's, but that's still only provide, that only still allows AT&amp;T or Verizon and doesn't allow the other to provide coverage?
At this point, right now, yes. At 97. If it, if it later went up to 107, that could change.
But we're at, both of them are, we're seeking coverage for both of them?
Right now, yes. I understand that. I'm just saying, yeah.
So an approval at 97 feet would be an effective denial to us?
Okay, but that's not what I was asking. My question isn't whether you would like it, whether you would appeal it, whether any of that. My question is, is feasible to build something at 97 feet, if theoretically that was what the board voted on, and to then build up in the future, if you knew in advance?
But what would, what would the future trigger be?
I don't know. If the tree, if you come back in two years, show some more pictures, show that it's not visually horrific, and then maybe you get up to 107.
We're, to be, we're not asking for an approval at 97.
I didn't say that you were.
And, but the variance is to go to 115.
I didn't say that it wasn't. The question is, is it possible if you're given, you could be denied a permit here, right?
Correct.
Could be approved a permit. I think theoretically, the board could approve a permit, special permit with criteria that said you can go up to 97 feet. That's what I think the board could do. I'm just asking if, from a structural, from engineering, construction perspective, that's possible. I think the answer was yes.
Yes.
Okay. That's all I wanted to, thanks.
Can I ask a question? I've gone back through a lot of the materials from, from the first time you were here in September. And I've seen all of these maps that show the coverage analysis in this gap that you've identified. But what I, I haven't been able to find, and it could just be that I'm overlooking it, is what is the gap in terms of customer served? How many customers are there that are falling within, you know, how many additional customers would be served if this 115-foot tower is approved?
We have it in terms of population.
Okay.
Not in terms of customers. It's in RF report.
So we tab three of the original application.
Okay.
Is the Verizon RF report, but I'll let Martin.
Martin, I think it's page nine. Page nine, Martin Levin, C Squirt Systems, residential population offload, between the two sectors, sixteen, 1,700 and four, residential population.
Thank you.
So are those people, whether or not they have cell phones?
Correct.
And whether or not they have AT&amp;T or Verizon?
Correct.
So the only people that, if it's AT&amp;T or Verizon that it would serve, are people that have cell phones that are, use AT&amp;T and Verizon?
Correct. But there's also, well, don't forget, there's, there's also road traffic. But also, when evaluating whether or not a gap is significant or not, you do not look at whether it's, a gap is carrier-specific, but when you're talking about population or significance, then it's not just market share that you look at. So, you know, AT&amp;T is 33% market share. So it's not, okay, well, you're really only talking to 33% of 1,700 because some of those subscribers, all of them are potential, some given age, are potential subscribers. And to the extent that someone may not be a subscriber because they don't have adequate coverage that would be provided. So there's, there's guidance on that, that it's the overall population you look at.
And again, going back to the zoning board hearing, I, I wanted to ask you what the range of error is for that approximate 1,700 in the population. Is that pretty much census-based?
It is done by census tract.
Right.
Each census tract is generally bounded by roads.
Right.
Just about, certainly in this area, any road probably defines the edge of a census tract. We take the coverage, we overlay it on that, and we take the, all the census tracts that are complete within, count those up, and then we divide by geographic coverage at the edge.
Yeah.
Those census tracts are divided by percentage of coverage. If we have 68% coverage and 32% of the tract out, we only put in 68% of the, and we do that census tract by census tract.
So I think I heard our consultant say that for a number like 1,700, it was accurate really only to the closest 700.
I, no.
That's what my notes say when I watched the tape.
That is what the consultant said.
Oh, but you disagree?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. So what, what range of error would you estimate?
At the highest, I would estimate no more than 10%.
Okay.
I have a question. We've received a lot of emails from a lot of the residents. And I've read this line a couple of times, and I just, just want you to, to comment it. And one of the, goes along this line, Varsity only builds cell towers. Now, I think you spoke to this at an earlier meeting. And I just want to know, is it true or not true that you only build cell towers? And if you build other types, you know, like the DAS, et cetera, can you talk to us a little bit about when that might have happened and where and why?
Sure. Varsity does own and operate DAS systems as well. However, as we've, and I'll turn it over to Chris in terms of the further location and development.
When you say you own, so you actually, that's something that you go out to a community and say, I put up?
Chris Davis, Varsity Wireless. Yes, we do own DAS systems as well. So we own a DAS system at the Prudential Center Arena in Newark, New Jersey, where we provide coverage, where DAS are very well suited for providing coverage in-building, where we have a designated population that comes in for games and things of that nature. We provide a very dense, robust service inside that facility. We also provide a similar system at the Philadelphia 76ers' practice facility in Camden, New Jersey.
So when you go into community and are looking to fill a gap because you have, because what, AT&amp;T and Verizon say, we're looking to fill a gap? I mean, how does it work that you choose one system or another?
In terms of general review, the, Varsity does its own general analysis in terms of, you know, where carriers may have coverage gaps, and that helps focus their search. And then, of course, as they've done, as we've done here, have partnered with AT&amp;T and Verizon to, to address their gaps. In terms of identifying what's the most appropriate solution, you know, that's in part done by, you know, by experience as well as review of the area. And so as we provided in, I think, the last hearing with a map, you know, and as David Maxx confirmed, a lot of the neighborhoods that are sought to be covered by this facility don't have existing telephone utility infrastructure, or telephone poles above ground, utility infrastructure above ground. Second, when you look at the, the nature and topography and morphology of the area, that helps determine whether or not, you know, a small cell system may or may not be appropriate. Here, as we've talked about before, you know, when you have lack, in one, lack overall infrastructure, two, the broad geographic area that's sought to be covered, you need the umbrella coverage provided by this kind of site to provide the broad-based geographic coverage. And then, as you've seen with the Verizon C-RAN, where there are pockets of capacity issues or things like that, small cells can be used to, to fill it. But generally, with an area of this size, given its topography and morphology, it's, it's going to be a macro site. It's not always a tower. It could be, you know, a church steeple, which doesn't exist in this area, or something else. In this case, there are no feasible existing structures. There are no, you know, other things that, to which Verizon or AT&amp;T could attach that would address those gaps. And so it is a tower, and we found, we think is the only feasible and best location.
Thank you.
After there's no further questions for the board, we'll entertain questions from the audience. I'd ask you to be brief, and preferably to focus on something that hasn't been brought up previously.
Hi, I'm Megan Omwane. I'm 242 Foster. And I just have two points. First, I'm going to, the DAS, I partially said that they do. According to your website, you do strictly indoor DAS. Is that correct? That's what your website says.
I'm sorry, I had a second. And here's a question, I heard a statement.
According to your website, you do indoor DAS, which is what you said. You don't own or operate or build outdoor DAS systems.
Oh, we have not at this one?
Okay. And to, thank you. And to Mr. Boynton's point about the Johnson Street Tower, this is just their map. According to this map, some of those towers that are even further away from Johnson are reaching close to the Boxford line already. So if you put it on a 300-foot tower, it's definitely worth modeling. Because if you look at these, there's coverage all the way to Boxford in some areas. And I'd like to ask if this red tower that's proposed in Boxford, is this showing coverage that you will receive from, when that goes online?
Yes.
That is?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we've, it's factored in because it's, it's an anticipated site.
I, I may, I, I'm very likely to be mistaken here, but I thought with that red tower symbol in Boxford at one of the earlier meetings, I thought you told us that the coverage from that tower had not been factored into the map.
No, it is.
It is factored in.
That's the green showing from that.
Thank you.
That was my memory as well.
Great, thank you. Okay.
Richard Stanley, Bridges Lane. Mr. Boynton, first of all, thank you for your thoughtful questions. I appreciate it. I worked in town for over 35 years, 25 of which as police chief. Worked in all sorts of conditions, lived on Bridges Lane, depended upon my cellphone coverage as a primary responder in all sorts of conditions. I've never complained about my cellphone coverage. I have never once had a drop call. I have never once had problems on my home. But at the same time, I have to point out that in fact, to the best of my knowledge, to the best of my knowledge, we have not, at the North Andover Police Department, and again, I left in 2011, have had complaints about dropped cellphone coverage for emergency services. Since 2013, I've run a consulting company from my home, and I depend on calls constantly on my cellphone, the only number my consulting firm uses, and I never had a problem. I took a ride this past weekend, and I know that you may not be able to take this into consideration due to the concerns you people have and the, and the rules you're under and so forth. But I went by 68 Ridge Way, and I'll tell you, I was horrified. It was the most unsettling thing I've ever seen to that neighborhood, that tower sitting in someone's backyard. We live in a residential neighborhood, and in that residential neighborhood, we bought our homes when the tower wasn't there. We didn't buy our homes when the tower was already there. The town has done a tremendous job protecting that area with conservation land and so forth, and done a great job. All these residents here, we spend an awful lot of money in taxes, we work hard to keep our property up and so forth, as you people do. And I appreciate the fact, especially your volunteer board and give of your time on these critical decisions for your fellow neighbors. We purchased a property in a rural area for that reason. After serving as police chief for 28 years in two communities, I've always stressed to my staff, officers working for me in both departments, treat people the way you would want to be treated yourself, or treat people the way you would expect your loved ones to be treated. I ask you as a board if you would like this in your backyard, if you would like this tower affecting your neighborhood where you've worked your whole life, to live in a community like North Andover, instead of precedent where these things can be popping up everywhere. I find it really hard to believe that towers have to be located so close to one another. What are the alternatives? I don't think they've all been exposed yet, or all looked at yet. I'm not an engineer, but at the same time, I know one thing. And I may be wrong, but I'll tell you, I think that Varsity was hunting for a location to put up a cell tower, looking at maps all over the place and finding weak signals, or what they perceive to be weak signals. The neighbors in our area have not complained about lack of cellphone coverage. Varsity created this because that's what they do. They build towers. And it's going to be at our expense, and they're going to walk away, and they're going to stick that tower in our neighborhood, in our community, and there'll be more to come. Thank you very much. And I appreciate your time and your thoughtful work.
Hi, Rob Jones, 643 South Bradford Street. I really appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I didn't get a chance to speak at the last zoning board meeting. I really appreciate you letting the residents have their, say their piece. There's a lot of reasons to oppose this permit. I think... I think Mr. Boynton pointed out at least three good alternatives that have not been adequately explored. They have not been adequately explored. We haven't touched on property values tonight, but that's something that impacts all the people in this area with this tower going in. I think this is an extremely bad precedence for the town. There are still going to be gaps in coverage per the applicant's information. So they are going to look for other sites to put additional towers that are going to be a blight. This is an extreme blight on the beautiful rural landscape on Foster Street. I spoke at the last planning board meeting about the fact that I volunteer for the Friends of North Andover Trails to maintain the trails in our town. We have beautiful trails in Foster Farm that are going to be impacted by seeing this. They're also going to be impacted on Farnsworth Reservation, Essex County and Greenbelt property on the backside of this tower, adjacent to Mr. Manzi's Mosquito Brook property. So it affects a lot more than just people on the street there. Last point I'd like to make, ties in with the last speaker. I value the role of government in our society. I value the fact that you guys spend your free time as volunteers on this board. I value that when it's a government of, by, and for the people, not one that's owned by companies. And we have a corporate entity sitting in front of you asking for a special permit. That is, I fundamentally oppose the idea that a commercial entity has the right to impose this structure on the residents in the name of competition as dictated by Congress. We're looking for you to give voice to the will of the people, the residents of this town, and deny this permit. I'm very disheartened with the lack of courage shown by the zoning board. And I implore you to show the courage they lacked and say no.
Any other comments? And I, how many more people want to speak? I just want to get some ideas, because I'd like to do it pretty quickly. I thank you, you've been cycling through very crisply at this point.
Mark Johnson, 440 Foster Street. Certainly, in order to grant this, you get to really show a need. I think Mr. Boynton's been harping on that today, and thank you for that. They indicated this was to essentially address, let's say, a gap that covers 1,700 people based on a census, right? So I would put forth, when you look at this area, ask yourself how much more dense could it be as far as population? And I would put forward that there is very little land left in that 700, 1,700-person landscape for development, correct? Because it's either conservation land, so we're not looking at growth of population here. We've all signed a petition that indicated we have coverage, adequate coverage. I have never complained about it, and I'm the same way. I, I'm an engineer, I take calls at home all the time, 440, I don't lose a call. So that's really suspect to me. We're not, we don't have more land to develop because of conservation and already developed land. It's all residential. There was a question in my mind, it came up, I guess, at the zoning board, I wasn't, not a lot of people got up to talk, didn't have time. I believe this is characterized as residential, it's not 61A? Because at the zoning board, it was classified as residential land.
Well, it's a residential property, 61A is an overlay on top of that, so they can be both.
Fair enough, understood. And I know we could pay taxes in that. The one thing I would like to urge the town, pole toppers would take care of this problem. What we hear is we get underground utilities. But there's nothing that prevents the town, because of easements, electrical easements, on those roads to put up a few telephone poles, or better yet, light poles, which they don't currently have, and lease the top of those. All of a sudden, the town has revenue. In my mind, that's a much better alternative than a cell tower in a historic area that's extremely well-known. You know, we've got, obviously, something into the master plan that considers scenic roads in North Andover now, but I understand that that was not. The other, only other point I'd like to make, and I don't think, going back to the pole toppers, nobody's really provided the technology, a good review of it, and said that it can't work. I do believe it could if the town took the initiative, put up a few telephone poles in those specific areas where we supposedly have, supposedly have sparse coverage, and turn that into, much better alternative than this. And the last thing, and nobody's brought this up, I've looked at the plans, and yes, we have a winding road that essentially comes up to it, but you've got a decent rainfall. If you know that area, that's at the bottom of that, two hills. We're talking major flooding in that area if we get rainfall, just based on the flow down that road, access road. Nobody's considered that whatsoever. And God knows, we've had plenty of problems with stormwater in the past when it comes to development. So I'd like the planning board to think about this. Everything that the town has come up with, as far as the residents go, the folks who do pay the taxes here, and actually chose this area to live in because of its natural wildlife habitat. It affects property values, and it does affect ecosystems. And if the town's willing, I'll provide more than enough evidence on that side of it, the ecosystem side. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Gene, as clarification, I believe at the initial stages of this application, there was a stormwater review.
I believe so, but I would have to look that up.
There was.
Rebecca had started it, but yes, I will go over there.
Mr. Preston, to answer your question, there was. We received comments from engineering, maybe there was a back and forth between us and the engineers resolving those issues, both in terms of something that they requested to be shown on the plans, which you now have, and addressing some questions that they had and have done.
And that was our town engineer.
Yes. But there is a stormwater management plan shown on the plans.
Tom Zarico, 1665 Great Pond Road. I hope I didn't miss something in the discussion here. We've got, I think, tangented a little bit on Peter's third question. I'd like to return to that for a second. I don't know if we got or if I understood the answer about what coverage of the gap area could be covered at the 97-foot plus five level, by either one of the carriers, ignoring the competitive desire.
We've given the minimum height analysis that shows the differences in terms of overall percentage, so.
Can we just see the map?
That's it then. That's the Verizon.
That's the gap, right? Why is the gap?
So.
But 97 would be everything that's in yellow, blue, gray?
And gray.
Everything but what? The red?
Everything but red.
Looks like it covers most of it at 97.
That's why at 97, Verizon and AT&amp;T have said it's acceptable. At below 97, one of them doesn't have adequate coverage. Both are part of this application, both are seeking to provide coverage. That's why the minimum height is 97, as confirmed by Mr. Maxson.
So I appreciate your patience in explaining that they both want 97 or above, and I think it's not a matter of not getting that. You've been patient explaining that. You know, from my perspective, it's not an ideal site, and one potentially viable solution is to do the best we can to address the most we can with coverage, given the lack of an ideal site, and still provide an opportunity to address the bulk of the coverage.
Your own consultant has confirmed 97 to the minimum for both, and that below that doesn't provide adequate coverage to the gap. So again, at 97 feet.
I don't know that our consultant said, and I'm not suggesting below 97, I don't know that our consultant said that a tower at 97 plus five would not adequately fill the gap. I don't believe our consultant drew that conclusion, because I don't believe we asked the question.
My recollection is that 97 was required for adequate coverage. It couldn't be below 97.
Right. Below that, you're in the trees.
So I, okay, I think we all agree on that.
And you can't put both at 97. So one has to go at 97, one has to go above.
But when you briefed.
No, one could be just one.
Correct, just one.
Yeah. But then you're denying coverage to the second carrier.
Varsity is the applicant, not AT&amp;T or Verizon, right?
But both, both carriers are tenants on the tower. Both, both have significant gaps in coverage that they are entitled to cover. Both are seeking to co-locate on the Varsity Wireless Tower. And so if, at 87 feet, it doesn't work for one of them, it is still leaving a significant gap in coverage for one of the two carriers that is part of the overall.
But you've also told us in the application, and I'm not trying to be argumentative, I'm just trying to make sure that we, that I have the full picture. Your proposal for the original tower showed five antenna arrays, one above the other. And then, for the reduced height tower, four antenna arrays, one above the other. And again, I understand you've been patient about what AT&amp;T and Verizon want, not below 97. But your design for the tower provides space for antennas, two antenna arrays below 97, which Verizon and AT&amp;T, based on what you're saying, don't want. But there is space there, and you have planned for two antennas at those two lower locations. So when you say that below 97 would still leave a substantial gap, I can understand that it would not fill the entire gap, but I don't know that it meets the definition of substantial gap. Because if an antenna fills a sufficient proportion of the gap, then it no longer meets the definition of substantial gap. It may not meet the commercial interests of having, you know, the number of customers that they want to have, but I'm not sure about what you just said about anything below 97 is automatically substantial gap. Because you told us that's a legal definition, right?
What we've, what we've said before, and when we talked about lowering the height, there's a difference between structural capacity, which is what we're building in, in the event that, because networks can change and mature and develop. And so, in the future, another carrier may have developed their facilities in a way such that 87 may work. What we know today is that, based on the development of the two carriers that are with Varsity, that, given their development and their existing sites, including taking into account the Verizon C-RAN sites, that at 97 feet, 97 feet is the minimum for them to provide coverage. So what Varsity's done is provided the structural capacity for facilities to be located below and provide a compound space. But what we said originally when we did it, when we proposed it at 115, was that there's no guarantee that, given the marginal coverage provided by those heights, that another carrier will, in fact, be able to utilize them to provide coverage. And I think we've been consistent.
One other, last question, which is a different question, if you could.
Okay, go ahead.
Please be patient with me for one more. And again, I apologize, it's a lot of information to process, but has there also been a dropped call analysis?
There's been a, my name's Chris McNeary, I'm at 24 Verizon Wireless. There's been a lot of talk about calls. What we're doing is a mobile network. People don't use these devices for phone calls that much anymore. This is about the transmission of data. We continually monitor the network, and we can determine when we have demand where our customers are not getting the service they could be getting. We are constantly striving to provide better service, not good enough service. So every time there's a discussion about, well, I don't have any dropped calls here or there, that's not really relevant to what we're doing. We're trying to provide something better that residents in this town and people who travel through this town demand. They may not be here tonight, but we monitor the performance and the efficiency of the network, and that's what the gap is about. The gap is not about how many dropped calls there are, so that information isn't quite relevant.
I should have articulated my question more precisely. I understand that when people come and say to us, hey, my call doesn't drop, that, you know, that may be interesting and in some respects useful to hear, but it's not the standard. But my understanding is that in the Telecommunications Act, and I may have this wrong, so I'll defer to Town Council, but I thought the Telecommunications Act provided something on the order of eight or 10 categories by which a board can determine whether or not there's a substantial gap or adequate coverage, and that one of those stated in the Telecommunications Act is a dropped call analysis. Now, by dropped call analysis, I'm not asking about surveying residents, hey, have you ever had a dropped call? What the Telecommunications Act, I think, is asking for there, I thought, was a formal dropped call analysis, and I'm asking if we have that.
So just on the, on the issue of whether or not that's in the Telecommunications Act, that answer's no. The Telecommunications Act itself says you can't effectively prohibit the provision of personal wireless services. Through case law, courts at times have looked at various different factors, sometimes looking at dropped call data.
I see.
But it, dropped call data is not, and there's a case on this, that is not a requirement to submit to a board or even to the court to demonstrate a significant gap in coverage. It's just something that sometimes, sometimes is looked at. To Chris's, to Chris's point too, one of the other things in terms of, you know, where technology is headed, is now you have what's called voiceover LTE or Volti. But from a data standpoint, a Volti phone call is treated like data, as opposed to, if you're on a 3G system right now, those would be, your call would be handled differently than the LTE data as well. And so that's why, in some cases, you know, you may have, people are saying, look, I have coverage, or I think I have coverage, or I don't drop. But that may not continue, given the, at some point, the decommissioning of 3G, just like we've decommissioned one, two, three.
So the real intent of my question is to make sure that we have adequately addressed this legal definition of substantial gap, and so maybe Town Council can give us her perspective on this question of a analysis of dropped calls.
I certainly can, and I think that the applicant's attorney is correct, is that is, it's not a dropped call analysis that is required, but it's the information that is submitted to the board. And that's part of what courts have considered as to whether or not there's sufficient data before the board in order to make a determination whether there is a significant gap in the coverage, but it's not a requirement. So provided that you feel that you have sufficient information so that you can make that determination whether or not it's a dropped call analysis or some other reports and studies, it's not that specific to that item.
So dropped call analysis is not a requirement of the Telecommunications Act, but you might, I just want to make sure I understand.
But it is one of those things, that cases that courts have looked at in their decisions, when they've said, okay, has the applicant made it, showing that there is a significant gap in coverage? And they say, well, what have they submitted to the board, or what are they submitting to court, so that we can base our findings of facts on this? And they say, one of the things is a dropped call analysis. And so if there's other information that's been submitted by the applicant that would address a similar type issue, then that could potentially be sufficient.
So I would add to my earlier three questions, all of which, from my perspective, I feel we don't have sufficient analysis. The coverage at 97 plus five feet, a in-depth assessment of what National Grid could really accommodate at the ideal location, an engineering assessment of Johnson Street Tower coverage, I would add either dropped call analysis or equivalent to take into account the 3G network coverage that you addressed, at least from my perspective.
But that's what we have given you. So what I was explaining is that dropped call analysis is one type of evidence that was historically used to prove a gap. It's not really relevant anymore because it's not about phone calls anymore. Our analysis is that we've determined certain thresholds for different geographic areas as to what the signal strength needs to be in order to meet the demand of customers at the network. And in this particular area, and in most of New England, it's negative 95 dBm. So that is the equivalent of the dropped call analysis. That's our reading of how strong the signal is.
In addition, there are cases, including a Massachusetts case, that talks about the radio frequency propagation.
that talks about the radio frequency propagation maps being credible, scientific, and authoritative. And then, to stop the quote, then just generally reasonably relied on by boards and courts, and typically relied on by boards and courts. And again, I would point out that Mr. Maxson has, again, in terms of the gap, he won't give an opinion on significance because that goes into the numbers, and he leaves that to the board. But in terms of the existence of the gap, he's verified that.
Thank you. I think we've had a robust discussion on that specific topic. And I want to see if we can maybe move on to something different. Todd, it's got to be completely different. We've been at it for a while.
I just wanted to ask you. At 97 feet, is the gap largely addressed by at least one carrier? That's it?
Well, each carrier, the coverage for each carrier is evaluated separately, and each carrier is entitled to cover its own gap. And so covering one in this app, it just is, it's not enough?
Yeah, I know. But I think you're saying yes, but it has to be for both.
But that has come up before. And federal law directly addresses this in very clear black and white terms. What it says is that the regulation by a state or local board or authority cannot unreasonably discriminate against providers of functionally equivalent services. What that means is that no board or state can say, well, there's coverage for AT&amp;T, that's good enough. Don't need to have it for Verizon or Sprint. Because that goes against the entire grain of what the Telecommunications Act is all about. It's trying to promote all the carriers to compete, to provide a better service for the American people.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying, but I'm not sure that that is an exact response to that question.
Well, it is. Both have demonstrated that 97 feet is their minimum height. And so to say to one, yeah, you get it. And the other one, you have to live with inferior coverage. Or go ahead, don't build your site, we don't care. That is an unreasonable discrimination amongst functionally equivalent providers when you're talking about particularly the same exact site. Both in the same application.
That's exactly what the words mean. I mean, exactly.
So do we have any?
I am being a flag for my client that they would like to talk to me on the side. I don't know why. But can we take perhaps a five-minute break? Because I'm getting a flag from my client, they want to talk to me.
Okay.
So can we perhaps take five?
Thanks for your responses and helping us understand.
Okay, well, I guess, do we have any business that doesn't? I don't want to go into the next topic. Do we have any, like, minutes or seconds or?
We do have minutes.
Hours.
Hours.
There are minutes from December 19th meeting. I will say that there is the engineer Joe Piznola that spoke for his properties. His name is spelled incorrectly, so we'll be happy to fix that. If anyone else has a motion.
So would somebody like to approve the minutes with that correct?
Motion to approve the minutes, the previous meeting with the error and spelling corrected.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Gene, anything else?
We do not, other than the zoning by law potential amendments, which is the next discussion item.
How goes the master plan?
How goes the master plan? It's like Thursday's meeting may be canceled. So they have not met since the last time, which the update was they're going to start working on the vision statement. Hopefully coming together with a unified recommendation on that. And then moving into visioning angles.
What time is the meeting on Thursday?
Seven o'clock.
And is that of the committee?
It's the master plan advisory committee. It's a public meeting. It is in the conference room on second floor of Town Hall. But again, the forecast I saw before coming here tonight lends to a possible cancellation.
We have a planning meeting on the 23rd.
Yes.
Pretty much if it's a Tuesday.
Sorry, Tuesdays in January.
Just a reminder.
For the other topic, I don't want to get into it. But how many pieces to the discussion will there be for the second topic? I'm just trying to figure out how we structure our time for it.
So there's the three warrant articles that you're going to review the drafts again.
Okay.
I do want to just make some introductory comments to each one of them.
Yeah, make somebody explain the full context of the process and everything when we start. Okay.
So is the plan for that, then, to make recommendations on each of those for the Board of Selectmen?
Not necessarily recommendations, but hopefully to recommend that they move to the Board of Selectmen for the warrant inclusion. Just to get them onto the warrant for the eighth, which would be directing me. So I would like a vote on that. But as far as recommendations, that would be after the public hearing process.
So the one, at least for the citizen's petition, that's pretty easy. And then it's just if we're done with ours.
You can decide that.
Yeah, okay. Yeah.
Want me to wrap them up?
Yeah, I mean, are they going to make, like, major changes in the plan as a result of this conversation?
I can go find it.
Yeah.
We're just preparing a lawsuit.
I know. I know.
It's compliance with Telecommunications Act.
I mean, yeah, I'll talk to you later. Yeah. Tough month is right.
There's so much. Everybody wants to get started. All the stuff that was on hiatus were like, oh, we're starting up again.
I think I'm at the point where I think I have something scheduled every single day for the month.
Yeah. And not only that, doubles. Everybody wants to be on Tuesday. I'm like, okay, five. I have a couple of those. Oh, well, it's all good.
I got to chase up there. We're going to make it 42 feet. It's a new technology going down rather than going up, right?
Seismic technology.
Exactly. Okay.
Thank you.
We weren't mean to them, so they're, we were very nice, actually. Yes, I know. I'm duly impressed. Thank you. We appreciate it. So we are where we are. I don't know if, as a result of your caucus, you have anything to add or need to add or to this conversation.
Yeah, I didn't know where to pick up. But I did know we had, you know, we certainly have the shot clock to worry about. And if something you're concerned about, it does, or we try to chance to talk to my client about that.
And some of the questions Mr. Boynton has raised. So candidly, we think we've provided enough information. We think we've answered all the questions. We think Mr. Maxson's analysis and his statements speak for itself. We understand that there are some additional questions. We think the answers are there before you. But some would like to see it in a little more clarity. So we're willing to continue to the 16th and address these last few issues, give the necessary extension to the shot clock. I know that runs out before then. But we just want to make sure that we have the last few questions here completely nailed down. We will provide that information to the board, to Mr. Maxson. We expect he will confirm what we've already said tonight in terms of viability of Johnson Street Tower, in terms of the information concerning going below 97. But we're willing to do that. But our expectation is going to be that we're going to wrap up on the 16th.
Are you requesting to do that? Because I know Peter has these questions. Frankly, I have more than enough information. I think you have provided enough information. I think the citizens have provided enough information. If you're requesting it, then I'd be in favor of granting it. But otherwise, I'm.
Well, I think we have, here's the dilemma. Our next scheduled meeting is the 16th. I think the clock tolls for this on the 13th. So we would either have to vote right now or we have to get some sort of continuation until the 16th, plus a few days to file a decision. So whether you provide any more data or not, the issue still remains. My preference would be that you give us a little bit of extra time. But if you don't, we will just make a decision tonight.
To be clear, what I said is if the board wants to continue this to the 16th, we're willing to provide that information. And as I said, because, I hope I said, we would certainly, we understand then that would require a short extension to the shot clock. So if the board feels it needs that information, we're happy to continue and to provide it. If the board members feel like they need it, they don't need it, then.
But I guess that's my question. You are, if we voted, if we were comfortable to vote today, you'd be comfortable with that? That's my question. Because if you're not, then I'd say we'd definitely continue. If so, then we have a discussion.
I think what we're trying to say is that there's members of the board, and we know at least one, that already has made his decision. If we're voting tonight, needs more information, and they think it's going to be helpful, we'll provide it. And we also would, we're going to want David Maxson here, so it's not just the letter, and you can hear it directly from him, so it's not taking our word from him. And that's kind of, you know, I know Mr. Boynton is requesting more info. If the four, if there's four of the people that, no matter what we give, they've already made up their mind, then it doesn't really, you know, then it's, you know.
It's really kind of a question of, we know Mr. Boynton wants it. But if others think it would be useful to them, we're willing to continue extending and providing it.
If others feel, as Mr. Goldberg does. Whether you provide more information or not, let you continue anyway. Because I don't like making a decision before we've spent some time, you know, thinking about, you know, what are the parameters of our decision? So my preference is to wait till the 16th.
You have the chair.
Let's vote tonight. I mean, we could close the public hearing tonight. We can keep it open. We could vote it tonight. We could do any one of those things.
If they close, but if you close it, we can't submit any more information.
That is correct.
But if we're going to the 16th, I would say our request would be not to close it then.
Okay.
I can, I mean, and I think it's worth a discussion. We really haven't discussed amongst ourselves since we've had the public hearings ongoing. For me, after these several months, I think that the applicant has done a very good job of presenting information. I think they've been very professional. And, you know, I would say it's an away game for you guys, as it usually is. I think the residents have been very helpful in providing photographs and data and information and plot points. And I frankly think I have enough. So I'm ready to have a discussion and potentially vote on and close the hearing. That's just where I stand.
Okay, well, let's poll everybody. I mean, you know, Jen?
I came in prepared to make a decision tonight, but I think Peter raised some very good questions. And if there is an opportunity to get more information, I think we should get the answers and do that. I think we hold it over.
There's no rush to keeping it open. I think that's a prudent, to keep the information. If there's missing information, keep it flowing. There's no rush to make this decision.
Okay. Pete? I'd like to hear. Do you want to hear more information?
I would like to hear. And I would like our consultant to be here and have a chance to be prepared to.
So I will say to that, we would need additional escrow funds established for him to come back. And I would add that I don't necessarily have any sense of the board. And so preparing a draft decision for the 16th, if you were to choose to vote on it at that time, I mean, either, I guess.
Well, I think we need at least a week after the 16th to actually, we'll make a decision probably that night, but we won't file it.
Right.
Because it'll take a while for you to write it.
To write it, right. And so that would be an extension on the 16th to potentially write it and then have it approved maybe on the 23rd, since you've added a meeting to that date. That's your call, whether you want to add that to the.
Can I make a point on this decision? I mean, I know I don't know this, because I appreciate that going to the 16th makes sense for a lot of you. But just for, because we have so much else going on, and we have, you know, the whole other issue coming before us, could you narrow the scope of public comment? I mean, give everybody the opportunity that they need tonight, but then for this next meeting, not have as robust, you know, limit that as much as reasonably possible?
I think at this point, we've.
And leave it to, I just, my feeling is, is the board often has a very short amount of time. You all have a very, much smaller time to actually talk among yourselves and to make that. And I think that might be the priority, to have discussion between all of you, much as we watched on the zoning board of appeals, their discussion that they had right before their vote, which was impressive. That was a very interesting meeting. And I was surprised by the outcome, to be perfectly honest with you. But I would, that's what I would like to see. Sit here in my, in view, you guys do that.
So that means, so I think there's a consensus. We'll get the other information. We'll go to the 16th. And it's just a question of what you want to extend the time to, what you feel comfortable with.
So if I understood the dates correctly, then 16th, you meet again on the 23rd?
23rd.
The 23rd is an added meeting to the regularly scheduled meeting.
Right. But so that's when you want to have a chance to consider the decision. So the decision would need to be filed on the 24th?
Probably. Could you do it the next day? Yeah.
Well, you wouldn't be able, Town Clerk's not open, you wouldn't be able to file it.
But we meet on the 23rd, we file on the 24th, yeah.
So you'd need an extension of the 24th? We can do that.
I would appreciate the 25th, just in case anything were to happen on the 24th.
Okay. So everyone, you're clear, I went exactly.
But, well, we're clear on the dates. I want to go back through Mr. Boynton's questions and checklist one last time so that I know exactly what we're trying to do.
I'd like to get a motion that we accept the applicant in writing that you will get continuation of the time to render a decision on this application till January 25th. Somebody like to make a motion to that effect?
Make a motion to that effect.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
So now, if you want to summarize the things that you're, you know, that you think Mr. Boynton wants, that'd be great.
So what I had is your first question had to do with National Grid. I don't know that we'll have any more, but we can, we'll talk about it. But I think your question essentially is, would working with National Grid longer yield a different result?
Would it allow the opportunity for you and National Grid to discover common interests that were not apparent when you asked the question in your letter?
We didn't send a letter to them. We talked to them directly.
I'm sorry.
We didn't do that now.
In their response.
There's going to be no addition. I've talked to the National Grids in 2015 on numerous sites. We've been denied any return. So there is really no more information that we're going to provide on.
Yeah, I'm not sure what we could provide.
On National Grid. And if that's the crux of your not wanting to vote for this, then there's really, I mean, there's nothing else that we can provide on that matter. I think we, your consultant called them, they said no. We got a letter, they said no. They've been telling me no for two years on this site and various sites. So I mean, there's really not more discussion.
So very helpful. That was one of my questions. Yes.
So the second is radio frequency propagation map for the Johnson Street site.
Well, I want to be careful of terminology here because you're more expert in the terminology than I am. So I was looking for what in, you know, non-technical terms would be, what is the coverage map? Were the Johnson Tower to be considered as a potential alternative?
So if we present this map that you have in front of you with Johnson Street coverage, taking out our site, and you can see Johnston has red at a particular height and see how far it overlaps into this area.
I don't want to prescribe to you how you should present the analysis. But since you've asked.
What you've mentioned.
What I would find useful would be to see, what coverage would the Johnson Tower provide compared to this coverage? So you'd see both. You would gray out these colors, but they're still visible. So on top of that, you could see Johnson coverage.
You can do something?
One key, very, very key point, which is why everybody here collectively does not see any reason to do it.[1755.88] Overlap, over existing sites is a major issue here. Interference, those effects, you can't show that on a map. But showing what the redundant coverage is over existing coverage is really important element of what we're trying to show here and explain, is, is why there's no efficiency in, in that approach. But we can show that on a map, so.
So, and maybe our consultant could comment...
Yeah.
...on the issues of redundancy and interference. Those are both in play here, right?
And honestly, David did his own, David could do some evaluations of his own on Jeff's...
Well, I'm not putting this on him.
He's doing it anyway, with all the stuff he's submitting.
I'm asking you to provide it. So, that was the second question. Yep.
Okay, let me, let me make sure I'm clear on the 97, because we have it for both AT&amp;T and Verizon. So, there's Verizon, and, and that's AT&amp;T. So, what, what are you looking for beyond what's here?
I want to be able to make an assessment of whether or not at 97 feet for one of them, does it bring a gap from the definition of significant to less than significant?
They can't both go at 97.
I understand that.
But that's, so that, but that's where I'm...
So, you need to show us, I think, the cumulative impact of only having one of the two, right?
That's a legal question.
Well, look, you've got the question.
No, I actually, I don't, I actually don't think I do at this point, because now I'm more confused than, than when we started. So, I, I don't want to come back and have you say, well, look, I asked you this question, and you're going to give me the information. So, we've given you maps that show AT&amp;T and Verizon, both showing their cover, you know, their, their coverage for...
Independently, independently, yes.
Well, this one shows AT&amp;T at, at a different strata. It goes 67, 87, 107, where Verizon's on the, I guess the, it's the odd, it's the 77, 97...
Right, because at 87, well, for 87 at AT&amp;T, it doesn't work. So, but I'm still trying to figure out, even with those maps, then Mr. Boynton still has a question? And so, what is, are you looking for a quantitative percentage, a number?
That'd be helpful. And do you think the, the quantitative percentage number that you just described would be more useful, applied to the estimated number of residents, as opposed to square feet or acreage of coverage? Because I'm not that concerned about wooded areas. Let's, let's see what the 97 feet does percentage-wise for the 1,700, plus or minus whatever the error rate is.
We do vary population in the report. We do vary the population of whatever ID.
Great. Appreciate you clarifying that. And then the fourth question I added at the end was, if we had a dropped call analysis, you've said to us that it's no longer applicable. I don't question your technical prowess, but that answer leaves me unsatisfied. So, maybe you can find a way to address that. I don't know. I'm not trying to ask you an impossible question, it's just, I saw the summary of dropped call analysis was one of the things that has been used presenting to boards, and when I asked...
Many years ago, though. It's just not the same.
Fair point. But when I asked, I was told, I mean, really, your answer was, you have got that, and it's no longer applicable. So, I don't quite know what to make sense of that. We've got it, but it's not applicable, says to me, we don't got it. So, there's two, there's two questions I don't want to address. So, I, I don't know if there's something you can help, help me with there?
Okay.
If, if you can? Okay.
Can I add a fifth question?
Sure.
I'm not sure if there's anything planned, discussed for Winter Street. I'm not sure if you, if your clients have any qualms about developing that area further in terms of, does that meet their coverage objective? It'd be interesting to know that, if there are any plans in the works to cover that area.
Okay.
Given that it's adjacent.
Well, we'll ask... What's the name of the street?
Winter Street.
Winter Street.
I know it is. It's up to the ID.
Okay.
So, I can answer the Winter Street. We haven't, we haven't ever looked at it either, so it's not on our plan. It could be someone else's plan, but it's not something we're looking at for a tower.
Okay. Thank you. We appreciate all the information. We appreciate all the questions from the public, and the careful listening, and we'll be back again on the 16th, as we said. So, I think everybody has context about what we're going to talk about then. Thank you.
Motion to continue?
We already made it.
All right, then I missed it.
We are accepting your request to continue. We've already accepted it, so you're going to give it to us in writing, and we will have it, so.
Thank you.
And your usual start out at seven?
Seven, yes. Thank you. Yes, but if you have additional comment, you'd be, you'd be better off getting it in as soon as you possibly can.
Yeah, there were three or four people that wanted...
Yeah. I, I think, trust me, we've probably had six hours on a public comment. I doubt if anybody has anything that's new, that's relevant in the record. I mean, I... Well, I don't think that was the intent, but we were at it, and this is like, now you're...
No matter how much time you can...
Yeah.
I just got to give it to you.
Okay. No matter how much public comment there is, somebody's going to judge. Yeah. 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 Okay. My day has turned out to be better than I thought, so I came... I have an old car, an old Ford. And it started, because it was in the garage, it started this morning, you know, I got to Anover, and I said, you know, it's not going to start tonight, but I'm going to come home early just to be safe. So, of course, it didn't start when I got home. So, I called my wife, you know, we finally got triple A, but I just got the verbatim that car's coming to the garage, and the car's going, so... Not so proud, I wasn't taking the car out in the cold weather over the last week, and, you know, so, oh, much better. We're ready to have the second chapter of fun tonight.
Okay.
Jean, if you can sort of set the context, because I think there's a lot of people here that are interested in discussion tonight from a variety of different purposes, so if you could frame it, that'd be great.
Okay, so, at your last meeting, we discussed the zoning, the potential zoning articles that could exist and be submitted for a warrant article for the special town meeting scheduled on January 30th. That discussion led to posting a notice for the public hearing for zoning in the Eagle Tribune that ran both December 26th and the 2nd, for a opening of a public hearing on the zoning amendment articles on January 9th. Okay, so that, it did notice. Tonight, we've provided a red line version of the draft bylaw, as well as a clean version for your review, and a map article. So, this will be the first time you review in the map article. So, if you're comfortable with the product after your review, my recommendation is that the board vote to move the articles to the Board of Selectmen for inclusion in the special town meeting warrant. Their meeting is scheduled on January 8th. My understanding is they will look to both open and close the warrant on that night. That warrant will print ahead of the planning board report, which is typical. So, that warrant would print with planning board recommendation to be made at town meeting. However, as you proceed through your process of public hearings, eventually, you would come to a vote to recommend either favorable or unfavorable or no action, or to be made at town meeting in a planning board report, which is presented at town meeting as well as the warrant.
I, I want to break the discussion tonight into two pieces. One is the substantive discussion of the bylaws, so that we get it to the point where we get it over the finish line, and we're pretty close. But I think there's probably some process questions that are going to come up, because there's a lot of people here tonight, and some of which have not been at prior meetings on this discussion. And so, I'm thinking that it might be helpful to allow some citizen participation at the very beginning of the meeting, because I think there's some questions come up about our process, and how we're following, and what is going to be reviewed and so forth at the beginning, so.
Can I ask a process question?
Yeah.
Before we get into that? One of the things that we've talked about more at the beginning was that...
Hey, since this was, since the, there was a marijuana zoning bylaw that went before town meeting last year, that, that in order to go forward, something would have to be substantially different. And I think we talked about taking a vote on that at some point, so I'm just wondering when that would be. Is that now, or is that towards the end?
So, that, that was my next point?
Okay.
I would recommend now. So, we did discuss that briefly today. I provided the memo that Town Council provided, I think, a couple of months ago now. We got in, the article would need to be not of late character, I believe is the terminology. So, we discussed that today. Do you make it now, or do you wait till after public comment?
Well, I, I guess my, my question was, I looked at it a little bit differently, is that there is going to be, let's assume for the moment, there's going to be two articles that are on the warrant, the two that we talked about. That part of our recommendation at town meeting is to address that very issue. That was my thought about how the process would work, because, for example, if somebody separate from the planning board submitted an article, and we held a public hearing on it, part of what we would determine is it was substantively different. So, it's not clear to me now that we have to make that determination now, that we would do it as part of our recommendation. But I may be wrong. I mean, I'm, in the end, from a practical point of view, it doesn't make any difference to me when we do it, but it just seems logical to do it at the end. I don't know if your views are similar or different.
I thought, I thought we would do it now, as long as we have a general comfort of what our bylaw is going to look like. Because I think in order to get it to town meeting, it has to be substantially different. And if we're going to recommend that it go to the Board of Selectmen to put on there, I think we should have a comfort, and maybe we vote again at the end. But I, I would want to have a comfort that what we're presenting to the Board of Selectmen is substantially different. Frankly, I think it is, and so I think I would be, I would want to make that as part of motion now, that this is what we're presenting, once we finish it, it's substantially different, and then we want to send that to the Board.
And I, I'll just weigh in on that, that that is really the legal standard, as to whether or not it is a substantially different, of different character than the one that was previously submitted, in order for it to go to town meeting. So, if what you're doing tonight is recommending it be placed on the town meeting, then I would suggest that it is appropriate to make that decision now.
Don't you need two points on that? Doesn't it need to be not only substantially different, but the planning board needs to be in favor of it?
Yes, in favor.
For it to go on to the selectmen, or on to town meeting?
To be on to town meeting.
Okay, so...
You could do...
So, substantially different to go to the Board of Selectmen, but to actually hit the floor of town meeting, the planning board has to vote approval?
Recommendation, yes.
But they don't have to do both of those things at the same time?
No, they do not.
At the same time, but before town meeting?
Yeah, it has to be before town meeting.
So, you're going to make, so as Jean said previously, you're going to have that planning board report after you have your public hearing process, and then you'll make that recommendation after you go through that process? You wouldn't want to make a recommendation prior to that process?
Oh, no, I totally agree. What I'm saying is, if, after all of public hearing and all that, this board shook its head, then it would not go before town meeting. Is that right? Am I wrong?
Well, that's, that's correct. It could not be heard at the town meeting. If, if, if we did both of those things...
Right.
You know, but we, the point is, we can do them at separate times.
Yes, I, no, I totally agree. I just, at one point in this whole process, I thought it was only one.
But we would have to make, we would have to recommend favorable action, and we'd have to say it's substantially different.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, okay. Any other strong views on whether we make that determination tonight, or we wait? I mean...
Could we get the definition of substantially different from the Town Council?
Well, I think, I think the standard is a different character.
Right. Whether or not it's of the same character.
Is there any more elaboration on what that means?
And so, the, so I did submit a reconsideration for the, of the zoning amendment back in June of '26, and you would look as to whether or not it had, it is of the same substance. And that's really a determination, so I, so a lot of what the planning board considers is, you have your standard, and then it's the planning board's determination to make that factual deter, to make that factual finding. And it's not necessarily, it wouldn't, you wouldn't defer to Town Council as to whether or not it is of a different character, but you would make that determination by looking at the entire bylaw that's, that you've created, that's been drafted at this point.
So, I mean, why don't we have that discussion after we finish? Or do you still have a definitional issue with...
Well, I'm not asking that the Town Council make the decision. I am, I, I guess I was hoping for, well, I was asking if there was more description of the definition. So, for example, you know, of a different character, does that mean, you know, a different, that the bylaw is addressing a different process? Or that the bylaw is addressing something in a different location? What is a different character?
So, it could be a number of those things. I think that it really depends on what's presented to you through the bylaw. So, if this, and you can, so we can go, and we could run through an analysis with this particular bylaw, if that's what you want to do, you can look at it in terms of the location, the use, the district, the process...
The review process, the, the level of standards and regulations, and so...
Right. And the type of uses permitted, and how those uses are permitted, and, and then what sort of character they're permitted with. So, there, that's what you would do, is you would run through your bylaw, and you would take a look at what was first presented, and say, under the first bylaw, it was at this location. It was pertaining to this particular use. It pertained to this particular process.
And it almost lends itself to a side-by-side matrix, right?
You, you could do that, if you, if that's the, the process you wanted to undertake, yes.
So, let's table it for a second. We can come back after we finish the discussion, I think. I think that would be fine. I, what I wanted to do at this point is, because I know there are a number of members in the public here, may have different perspectives on the discussion tonight, but if anybody has sort of a process point or concern about how we're going through this, please feel free to get up and, and speak right now, if, if anybody does. Because if not, what we'll do is, we will continue, we're going to review the bylaw one more time, and put it in an order that we think is appropriate, and then make a final determination of it.
Okay, I will add, you do have a letter, you do have a letter submitted in your packet that was submitted this weekend, that was sent out promptly.
Hey, I'm John Jersey, excuse me, I'm in South Andover. I had a, I had a question. I was watching the, the tape video of your meeting from two weeks ago, and, you know, I was, I think I appeared for the Board of Selectmen last fall, and I, my advice was to, you know, wait to the regulations, you know, get finalized, then come to town meeting and do this in May. Your comments, Mr. Simons, about, you know, why now, and you, you said over and over, and you weren't convinced that they needed, they needed this by April 1st. And I don't know if you ever got that, that answer clear, but I, I myself am unclear why this needs to go forward right now, and we can't wait till, till May. My fear is, quite frankly, we could have a situation on January 30th where there's a snowstorm, it's cold, people go to Florida for, for the winter, which I did. You're not going to have a great turnout. Well, the proponents will have a great turnout. I don't think it's reflective of the town. So my advice to this board would be to hold, hold off and wait until, till May because I, I can't think of one reason why this April 1st reason about getting their application by then makes any sense for their point of view. Definitely doesn't make sense from your point of view, the town's point of view. The, the regulations just came out in a draft formation a couple of weeks ago. So I would just leave it like that. I, I just don't understand why, why we're rushing. And the reason they gave two weeks ago to me, you know, didn't hold water.
Sorry, I need, I'm sorry, are you done?
Well, I was directing the question to John, but you have a question.
Yeah, I guess, I guess, my guess, question, I don't think I said anything last time. I'm not sure we have a choice, is my understanding, that they filed, they warrant, our, the article's been filed.
No, no, they filed a, a warrant article that actually has no substance at all to it, but.
Right.
They can't do anything without the zoning.
A special town meeting is happening.
Sure, absolutely. We know, we know it's happening, but they can't do anything without the zoning.
Right. But the point ends up being is they could take this exact thing that we've worked on for six months.
Sure.
And submit that.
Sure they could, absolutely.
They could. And so I think what you're saying is the planning board should recommend unfavorable action to that article, not on the substance of it, but on the timing of it.
Well, the argument that was made, I think it was by Attorney Rosen last time, was that they wanted to be, you know, first in line, and that's fine. But they were gonna, they were gonna do this under the medical marijuana statute, the existing law that we, that we know about. That they wanted to get a PCR by April 1st, if I recall correctly, so they could get, get in line. They've demonstrated, in my opinion, in no way they can get to that April 1st deadline. I mean, the whole point of, as you probably know, or maybe you don't know because you're really focused on the recreational part, but medical marijuana is completely vertically integrated. You have to grow it, you have to cultivate it, you got to process it and you got to sell it. They're just here talking about the cultivation facility. Where are the dispensary locations? Where are they going to dispense this? They said they're not going to dispense it in North Andover, we know that. But where are they going to dispense the product? They can't get anything unless the, they're, right now, they're in the citing profile stage. So what, what's their plan? What are they going to do with that? And that question was never answered last, at your last meeting. So I don't think they have any chance of getting a PCR by April 1st. And that's their whole motivation, or at least what I took away from your comments, John, was like, you didn't buy this April 1st deadline. And maybe you did towards the end of it, I, I'm not sure. So I think the applicant owes the town and the sport especially, where are they going to dispense, where, where are they going to do this? Because this is all fruitless if they can't dispense.
So perhaps maybe, I don't mind if I could put you on the spot, the applicant, and to respond to that?
So I think Mr. Terese is questioning the answer that I gave to you two weeks ago. And to answer that question, I guess I would answer by telling you, that's exactly why Mr. Terese is here tonight. There is a first mover advantage and Mr. Terese is well aware of it. He's the executive director of an organization called the Cannabis Dispensary Association.
Commonwealth Dispensary.
I'm sorry, the Commonwealth Dispensary Association. And what they're doing is they're trying to protect first mover advantage for the medical marijuana registered dispensaries that exist as of today, to give them a head start over everybody else that's trying to get into the industry behind them. And so the reason he's here tonight is because he doesn't want us to have that chance. Now, he may be right. At the end of the day, we may not get a medical dispensary opened in time. We think we can, we're working on it, we're under confidentiality agreements, but I can tell you right now, we are in active negotiations with two communities and we are also in active negotiations with a number of other organizations that have permitted and approved sites but can't afford to build them themselves and may be willing to sell them to us. If we don't get it done, then we lost. We spent our money, we spent our time and we spent our effort and we didn't succeed. At the end of the day, then we won't get a registered marijuana dispensary, we won't get first mover advantage and we won't get through citing profile. But it's why we started last summer and it's why we've been diligently working at it. And as I explained last time, it's why we finally called the meeting. Not because we wanted to put pressure on anybody, but because we recognized ourselves that in order to get in the queue and be in line on April 1st, we had to move it forward. We saw everything the board had done, we knew how close this board was to a final draft, we appreciated it and we felt the time was appropriate enough. We would have preferred to have a meeting in the fall, we would have preferred to have it in October or November. More people would have been here, they wouldn't have been in Florida, they wouldn't have been traveling for the winter. We're doing the best that we can under the circumstances. We are in active negotiations with two communities and several license holders, knock on wood. We hope that by the time we get to town meeting on January 30th, if not sooner, we will have one of those wrapped up. And if not, then we hope between January 30th and April 1st, we will. That's what we're doing right now. Thank you.
Okay. Well, one back and forth.
Thank you. Thank you.
And then we'll take a question.
Yeah, as, as any, as any good lawyer does, attack the messenger first. I'm also a 49-year resident of the town, former selectman, former state rep and former, actually current school committee member. So I have a vested interest in this, in this town. I'm not just here speaking on behalf of the Commonwealth Dispensary Association. But using that argument though, if I thought that Mr. Rosen's client was legitimate medical marijuana treatment center, I'd be encouraging them. I'd be wanting them, I would want them to join the Dispensary Association. So that argument falls on deaf ears from my perspective. I think those who were in the planning board last year remember me at town meeting saying if this was a legitimate medical marijuana proposal, I'd be 100% behind it. You know, if this is like a 20, 30, 40, even 50,000 square foot proposal with, with the dispenser, which I'd be okay with in, in, in North Andover, I'd be okay with that. I'd be, I'd be supportive of it, I'd, I'd encourage them to join the, the association because right now I'm actively, you know, trying to get members to join the association. My fear, and, and I mentioned this last time, is I think their play is not even bother medical marijuana. They're going to just go for the recreational wholesaler and that's it. So this whole first mover advantage, which, which I don't even sure what that means, but, uh, you know, there's a reason the statute allows for existing RMDs to, because they've never been vetted. They've gone through a process. They've gone through a process with the municipality as well, as well as with the state. So again, I, I just think this whole confidentiality thing, I, I just think it doesn't hold water at all. Because usually you know exactly, it's in the newspaper all the time, who's going for what, letter of non-opposition here, what's going for there. To me, if they had any credibility, we would know where they're going to dispense. They've been at it for almost a year now. It seems like it, it's just a lot of, a lot more false promises.
So if, if I were to summarize your position, it's that we may come up with a good bylaw, but we should hear it in the spring, we shouldn't hear it in the end of January.
I, I think from a government point, from North Andover, public policy, citizen involvement, absolutely. And honestly, these draft regulations, they're draft regulations. They could change, you know, by March. So you're also drafting a bylaw on some of this, I'm sure some of this is incorporated, but, uh, things could change. So why, why rush it if you can wait till May? And there's really no, no reason. I mean, we know town meeting's happening, but, but let them do that. Let, let them.
Well, they are, I mean.
Sure.
I think, I think I understand Aten's point as well. So we'll give Mr. Rosen one last chance and then we'll let the lady from the finance committee speak next.
Mr. Terese is absolutely correct. Attack the messenger. He wants to attack me because he wants to convince you not to move forward. The fact is, his organization is actively advocating with respect to the regulations dealing with recreational marijuana. He's a lobbyist, he's on Capitol Hill, they're going to the same meetings that we're going to, they're attending the same sessions that we're going to. They're trying to protect the recreational market so that the groups in his organization get that first mover advantage that we've been talking about for eight months in front of this board.
Fair, fair enough. I think we get.
One other, if you note, you, you posted an article in the agenda and it was a fantastic article and thank you for posting it. And what it does is it points to exactly what we're trying to do at 1600 Osgood Street. And it's a recognition that in fact, as the markets are, are opening up and as the markets are becoming developed in communities, the truth of the matter is, it's not the gold rush that people are making it out to be. The prices are declining, the cost of goods sold are becoming more effective. And at the end of the day, the dollar amount on the prices that people think they're going to get for cannabis that they're going to sell in the short term is a fallacy, it's not true. The model they're talking about is the actual model we're looking at, which is being able to grow, cultivate, manufacture at an efficient cost. We're doing this because we had a building. We have a radiation oncologist who's the husband, we have a wife who develops real estate and we own a vacant building. We've told you this for eight months. If we didn't own this building, we wouldn't be here. But to say that we're not legitimate and to say that we're not real is a fallacy. We have a building that will actually comport with, with their advocating in that article, which is doing things for agriculture that are energy efficient, that are economically beneficial, that can be done to reduce the cost of goods sold and help develop an economic and efficient market. And this property fits the bill and that's why we're here. Thank you.
Karen Blake, 15 Caroline Way. In my opinion, the folks who would like to establish this facility have demonstrated an amazing amount of detail. This has been studied for a year now. We have an opportunity here to put this before the people. We have, this is an operation which has indicated its legitimacy. I, I can't imagine, I cannot imagine calling this operation or application for operation illegitimate. It certainly is above board. You have gone and you have seen for your site visits, the facilities, you have talked to the growers, the professional people who are brought in from Netherlands. I think it's time now to let the people vote and let these folks move forward with their application instead of this constant delay. We have delayed and we have delayed and we have delayed. And I say, it is time to vote.
Thank you. So let us now go through and take another run through the bylaw. And if you could kind of lead us through the, the changes and that would be great.
I, I can lead you through the changes. So what we've done in the past two weeks is incorporated the changes that the board has asked for. And also included in this, we did a change in the numbering of it. So this, this bylaw is now going to take the place as the temporary moratorium, so the numbering is different. And I added a section that will, that states that this bylaw intends to replace the temporary moratorium and rescinds that. We've also added in, this is on page two, 8133, the boundaries are now complete.
Is this the redline version, page two?
Yes. Yes. And it's on the screen also.
Ah, thank you.
On page three, I added the qualifier regarding, and this is the statutory language regarding the definition for a limited medical marijuana treatment center, as to who can, as to where that marijuana will be dispensed or to whom it will be dispensed. And the marijuana establishments, we added the correct language and definition of the different types of establishments as they are listed in the statute. Page four, we, I clarified the terms of what is a prohibited use. And also on, it's also on page four, 8136, section two, the, subsection two, it's the requirements for the performance bonds regarding the particular site-specific and use-specific criteria that the planning board will look at in issuing a special permit. And that goes to the odor and the size in the annual inspection.
And is that also to include any remediation in case the facility becomes defunct?
Yes, that's the, also with the bond. Yep.
Okay, yeah.
Yes.
Oh, dismantling.
Yep, dismantling, the bond amount in escrow, dismantling. Subsection three is essentially is rewording of what a limited medical marijuana treatment center is and that it's allowed in sub-district B. Subs, and that also includes, it's not a separate subsection, but it's a, it's a separate paragraph. And this is, this goes to the proportionality of a cultivation, marijuana cultivation center and having that 15% of the gross floor area dedicated to cultivation. And the language from, it went from gross square, from square feet to gross floor area and that is consistent with the zoning bylaw in other places is how particular sites are On page five, 8137, location, we switched the language to the language that was suggested in Mr. Goldberg's draft. In 8138, the dimensional requirements, subsection two, the underlying district's dimensional requirements will be, will pertain to all the AMUs that are permitted. On page six, 8139, the specific citing review, we just added or bolstered the language in those particular sections regarding that specific citing criteria and also stated that the regulations for commercial medical marijuana would be pertinent to the type, to the review of the citing criteria, within that citing criteria. And on page seven, the same language regarding the third-party consultant reviewing those criteria is added to each of those sections. So I can sort of give you an overview of that if you'd like. That relates to, there's the community impact statement, the water use study, the security measure report, the transfer of marijuana policy, the waste management report and the energy and environmental standards report. There's an odor analysis and report and a construction management plan. And so within all of those sections and those criteria, the same language applies. You have to submit the report, a third-party consultant will be, or may be retained to review those to make sure that the proposed policy and reports meet the best standards of the, the best practices of the industry.
So I had a question.
We made that consistent. Yep.
I had a question about sub-paragraph one on the middle of page six. So where it talks about the community impact statement and an analysis of the project's impact on the town's surrounding neighborhood, and then it gives several examples. Now it says, including but not limited to, but then it gives some examples, architectural consistency, pedestrian, overall character, impact on historic. I mean, when I was reading this, I, the question that came to my mind, if we're talking about the surrounding neighborhood, why not real estate values as part of the character and impact, not character, but impact on the surrounding neighborhood? An analysis to include but not limited to, all those things plus real estate values.
So the, I'll just, just let you know where this language come from.
Sure, please.
And that is from the site plan review that's in the zoning bylaw currently. So that's what that community impact review relates to.
So I know it could still include that because it says not limited to.
Yes, it could. Yep. I just wanted to let you know where.
So the way it's worded now is for the purpose of consistency.
Yes, correct.
I, I think requiring that would be difficult because I'm envisioning, you know, there could be very small AMUs, you know, we have a independent laboratory that, in an already existing building, that's our, pretty much would have no impact on property values. Then we have a giant facility for cultivation and I'm not even sure how you, if you could even get comps for how, and you could get studies from other places about how values have, have gone up or down. I'd say it's something that we could talk about at the time, but I, I don't, I don't know that I'd want to include it as unnecessary because I'm not, I'm not sure it can be done. I'm not sure, given the history of legal marijuana, that there would be anything, at least at this point, that would be worthwhile. I just don't know.
So, I, I mean, I, I don't disagree with anything you're saying and I appreciate the value of sort of consistency, but what's really sort of resonating with me here is we're talking about. about an impact statement on the surrounding neighborhood. And if I was in that neighborhood, one of the things that would really loom large for me, for most people, the largest investment you make in your life is your house. That's pretty darn important. And, and this is a bylaw that I think we have structured for not just, we, we have something in mind more than a small AMU.
That's true.
We have something of scale that exceeds anything we've seen in the country. And so I, I really find the consistency argument compelling. I find your arguments compelling. But when, when I think of it in those terms, something on a scale in this town that is unprecedented in the country, and assessing the impact in the surrounding neighborhood, what for most people is the biggest investment they'll ever have, and we're not mentioning it. I don't know.
What you just said is what makes me really nervous about putting in here. This is unprecedented, right? How can you require an applicant to provide comps or a real estate impact statement on something that doesn't have any comparables out there? I think it's something that we could certainly ask about during the process, and I expect that we will get public comment if this passes and there is an application for a special permit. But to require it as part of the bylaw when it's something where it's such a new industry across the country, and it's just hard to understand how it will have an impact, I think it's sort of requiring an applicant to make something up almost.
That I wouldn't, like, when we got the stuff in the cell tower, I'm like, yeah. You know? How much, how much stock do I actually put in this? I mean, anecdotally, from what I've seen, at least in Colorado, property values have risen. Now, I expect that within a few years, they will fall as, as, you know, the, all these new jobs stop being new, and people stop coming and things like that.
I don't disagree that it's important. I should say that, just, just.
Yes.
I don't disagree it's important, but.
Right. Here's what I worry about. The board gets to this point in time, and someone raises the question, and the sense is, well, we know it says not limited to, but you know what? It's not here. So, and, and it's too hard.
So.
And I agree it's hard, but it's important.
I think if you ask for it, they'll provide it.
And I can provide, so maybe there is a way to deal with this with not specifically calling out a real estate analysis or a real estate appraisal or impact on that, is we can relate, in this section, relate the community impact statement back to the purposes of the bylaw that are set out in eight thirteen two.
Yeah.
And that talks about the impact on the neighborhood and the adjoining, adjacent properties and residential neighborhoods, historic districts and all that.
Yeah, I mean, I think some of that because obviously, you know, the infrastructure is, you know, we're obviously concerned, I mean, the whole.
Right.
Thing is focused on the impact on the whole infrastructure.
Mm-hmm. So I could add a phrase.
You can add, yeah, maybe some paratory language in there that gets that.
That it relates, okay. Does that, does that satisfy your?
It probably doesn't fully satisfy me, but I appreciate the effort to find some common ground.
Yeah.
All right.
I think it's going to be really important to people.
Well, it is, but to some degree, you know, you can make the argument that the county meeting, whenever it's held, is part of what, that's what, part of what they're deciding, do they want that used in the town.
Indeed it is.
Indeed it is, yeah.
So if you don't have any questions on that, any other questions on the specific siting review, you can skip down to, within the, sort of the additional criteria into the site plan review, there were not very many changes. There was just, I think that was mainly the stormwater grammatical change, that's where you'll see the red line in there. And as we discussed at the last meeting, I included specific findings for the planning board. And this is, I don't remember somebody's, somebody's version, either Mr. Goldberg's or mine, or one of the, or, so the combination of a number of people, so what we did is we put in the specific siting, specific findings relating to the specific siting conditions. On page fifteen, section two, we include, or we kept, the requirement that they receive a provisional or final registration, and has received all other required permits, licenses, and approvals from the Commonwealth.
See, and I would just go back, this is really minor, I just noticed it though, I thought I was worth pointing out. On fourteen, on page fourteen, A1, I think there was a typo, it says sue instead of use.
Oh, yeah.
Good catch. Nice.
That's fixed on the cleanup version.
I'm sure that's, that's not at all what we intended.
This is what spell checker knows is where. And the grammar checkers are so horrible, they don't catch anything, yeah.
Just ignore all.
Okay, well, wait. Okay, so, are you looking for the typo? Are you looking?
No, no, no.
Oh, no, keep going, okay.
I saw the typo, but you were looking at the rest.
Okay, we fixed the typo. If we go to page sixteen, and this is, this is additional findings, that the, that the AMU has the appropriate plans that are required, and that's under, that's also under the specific siting criteria. On page seventeen, eight thirteen thirteen, we made that change that says it's the applicant's license to operate, and that is, and we also included the Cannabis Control Commission or the Department of Public Health, whichever is applicable, because there's regulations in the law is, is changing at the, as, you know, as everything evolves, the regulations evolve. On eight thirteen fourteen, we added language about that bond being able to, be used to remedy any public nuisances that are created by the project. We, on page nineteen, eight thirteen eighteen, the, the language just was clarified a little bit, it was a little bit vague as to what a site alteration or violation of the bylaw would be. And so we had discussed that at the last meeting, and we added, changed that language there. And that was it. Those are the only changes.
So, that being said, the research facility?
Oh, that's right. Go ahead.
No, sorry, I was going to ask a question about that, and I go ahead.
Okay, so in the regulations, that, the draft regulations, referring to the research, we have it as development, they are calling it research facility, so I think we should stay consistent with that terminology.
What page are you on?
Well, so the question I have on that is that there are some things in the regulations, such as that, right, so that there's a research license. Basically, what we were talking about, research and development, they're going to have a license for. So do we want to make, knowing that these are draft regulations, I assume that that will pass easily, but it's not yet. Do we want to make changes such as that now or later, right? So if we want to change that now, then we should put that also as an allowed use and go back and make those changes above, where we talk about what the allowed uses are, you know, change it throughout. And I think, I think that would be an easy one, because then we just say, we just get rid of the language we have and use the state language about what is a research facility. But I think it kind of, thanks to the bigger question of if there are other things in the regulations, are we going to deal with them now, or are we going to wait till later?
When you say deal with them now, we can't deal with them by January 30th.
Correct. So, right. So, but do we want to make this particular change, which is in the draft regulations right now?
In time to submit it to the warrant.
Wait to see until the regulations, leave it as is, and wait to see what actually passes.
Is this change just terminology change, or is there?
It's adding an entirely new license that didn't exist at the state level, but what we contemplated would probably be a type of license that we would give it to. So basically, we were ahead of the game in terms of what should be licensed, and I think based on what the applicant was talking about in their facility, we realized that there's this place that should be licensed but hasn't yet. The state realized it as well and said, hey, let's license this. And so we could just take our research and development.
So take the definition, number nine on page three, is that where we define marijuana research and development, is that?
Right. And change that to the state definition, and then just make sure that under AMUs, that we're just consistent throughout, that it's now going to be the research facility license that is licensed by the state.
Well, I mean, if it's, if it's a crisp definition at the state level, and it's not substantially different from this, what's the harm in taking their definition?
I think for this one, it's a good idea. I think I, I, I'd be in favor of it. I just think we just got to realize that there might be other changes that we need to make later on. I think, yes, we may remember mine.
I mean, it's entirely possible that we may have to make technical corrections.
So that would be replacing marijuana research and development with marijuana research facility?
Research facility.
And just replacing the definition as proposed, understanding that that definition itself may slightly change as the regulations get drafted, but I think that makes sense.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's just in the spirit of getting it as close as we think it's going to be in time for the warrant, but.
So I guess my question is, from a process point of view, how would you like to handle it? It feels to me that there's some edits tonight. Do you want to just make the edits and that's what you give to the selectmen, or do you want to send it to us and have us just further cross-check it, or how would you like to do it?
I think this, we could make the edits, but I would ask that you motion that you're approving it as amended this evening, to go to the Board of Selectmen for the January eighth meeting.
Okay.
To be included in the warrant.
To be included in the warrant.
Including the amendments. Including the amendments.
Yes, so we'd be, including that, you'd be changing the definition of the marijuana research and development to reflect that definition that's in the draft regulations, and that we would, we would make the change on the community impact statement that relates back to the purpose of section eight thirteen. And then the only other one, I think, was, and we already made that one, minor one.
So we would be making, let's assume when we get through this, two motions. One, to recommend giving it to the selectmen, the placement of the warrant, you know, as amended tonight. And then we would make the second decision related to whether there's substantial changes.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Right. Two things.
Yep.
But how could we do the first without having done the second? Could do the second first.
I actually think, I actually think you would have to do the first. How do you know something's substantially different unless you know what it is? Right? So.
Well, we've got to.
Right, but we have to vote, I mean, technically, I think we have to vote on it that that's what we want to present.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think it really matters.
So, okay, but when we say vote on it, I'm still.
So we're voting to send the draft bylaw, as we just talked about, as it's amended, to the Board of Selectmen to put on the warrant, understanding that we're going to have public hearings on it for the next three weeks, and then ultimately, we will take a vote on whether or not the planning board recommends approving it. So right now, we're just sending it to the Board of Selectmen.
So if we vote to send it to the Board of Selectmen, we are expressly not taking a position on whether or not we support it.
Exactly.
That's correct.
We're just saying that it's substantially different.
We will take a second vote, that'll be the second part of our vote, or the second vote.
Because under the stat, sorry, I didn't mean to, I didn't mean to, so under the statute, you don't take that vote, that vote as to recommend or not until after your public hearings. That's what your public hearings are for, is to have that discussion, and then in the end, you make that recommendation in your.
That's my understanding. I just wanted to make sure we had a common understanding of that, because at one point in the discussion, I heard the word approve.
Approve the motion to send.
Well, okay.
Fair enough.
Can, so there's just a couple of things, I just want, can I ask you a couple of questions before?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, just a couple of things. I, I do think that Mr. Turisti's points are well taken. I mean, I've always had really good conversations with him, and I think he's really intelligent on the, on the subject. I also question whether you guys can make the April first deadline, but I think you've explained why you've done it. You know, I think we can disagree, but frankly, I don't think it matters at this point. A meeting's been set, and I think it would have been better to have it in May. I think, we all probably think that, but a meeting's been set, and I think it's much better to have one meeting where we deal with all marijuana zoning, because the citizen article's going to be on there, right? No matter what. So I think it makes no sense to have the zoning article in January, and then, and then separate. And I think we're so close to having something that I think is ready to be presented, whether we vote to approve it or not, but we're close to what we think is a bylaw, right? So I think it, I think it makes sense just to go forward with the process, move, to vote it, to go to the selectmen, have our public hearings, and then vote on whether or not we think it's an appropriate bylaw. I also do think it's substantially different. I think it encompasses the whole town, although it has a primary focus on 1600 Osigood. I think it is so much more thoughtful and deliberate and exacting than the previous one. It really calls out all the things that people had questions about in terms of water use and electrical use and odor use, and says, you got to give us plans in advance, and you got to prove to us that, that you're going to be able to do it. So I think it's substantially different. So I just, on those things. In terms of the public meetings that we have coming up, I know retail will come up, and we haven't spent that much time about it, so I think we should be prepared to think and talk about that. One thing that really hasn't come up is that if you look at the draft regulations, that we really can do very little about transportation. So there are businesses carved out for marijuana transport, either companies that are, are making it can, can transport as part of that, or they're going to be independent companies licensed just to transport. And we have little to, almost no say in that. So even if we were to ban retail in town, people are still going to be able to get it at their houses, whether we like it or not. So just, that's something to keep in mind. And that, that there will be changes to these regulations, and we very well may have to come back in a town meeting and make adjustments based on what happens. That's all I have to say.
So, those are, as usual, very helpful to hear. You always do make helpful comments. I guess my perspective on that is, with respect to sort of the timing of the town meeting, I think the applicant has exercised their sort of right to call, and that's up to them. They've made their assessment that that's important to them. But I keep hearing people say, you know, put it before the town, let the town vote. And I agree with that. But I have to say, I'm really worried that the town's not going to be there on, you know, a cold, dark winter's night at the end of January, and that really worries me. And I am less concerned about the amount of time and effort and work we've put into it. We have, a lot of people have. But if this is important to go before the town, and I think it is, and I, I know I've made a number of comments, and I, I think the board has supported the notion that public engagement is critical because of the scale and scope, and because the towns voted against this twice in two different forums. And so I am worried about, I mean, it's one thing for the applicant to elect their course, that's fine, but I'm then worried that sort of out of a sense of process, we send our good work forward, because it may not be the right venue.
But the, I think the, frankly, the dilemma is that there's nothing to prevent, if we were not to submit something to the Board of Selectmen, to prevent the applicant from taking exactly what we have done here and submitting it as their article. I think, again, I, I would much prefer to do this in May. I think it's a better, it allows for a broader feedback process, and it's probably more convenient for a lot of people, so I would, I would prefer that. But I agree with Aiden, that the applicant has chosen to accelerate the timeframe, and we're going to end up with exactly the same article. And I think some people may say, I don't like this process, and maybe I wasn't inclined to vote for it, but now I'll vote against it. I don't know. I don't, I don't know what people said. But I think from our point of view, we have done a tremendous amount of work to put together the best possible article we can, and that's what we will end up with. It's probably not going to be quite as good as it would have been until we waited till May, but, I mean, I think it's, it's pretty thorough, it's pretty complete, I mean.
Yeah, I, I agree that it's a much better product than we had last.
And I agree with Aiden, it's substantially different in that, you know, the last one was less than a page, this thing is 20 pages long. was less than a page. This thing is 20 pages long, and it addresses every issue. I know that I raised at last town meeting about process and incomplete and thoroughness. So I think it, you know, I mean, just from an intellectual honesty point of view, you have to say it's substantially different.
So to the question of substantially different, I mentioned earlier, it sort of may, may be suitable for sort of a matrix format, which has its risks. I'm not always a believer in the pro and con approach. But, you know, I just went through. There's 10 sections. It's not like it's 500 sections. There's 10 sections. We could just go through and get a sense of the board. Is this section the same or different? And it only takes 10.
Right.
I mean, should we go through that exercise?
I mean, if you want to go through it quickly, fine.
I think we could if, if people don't object.
Okay.
And I've just taken the bold-faced headings off the bylaw. So there's 10. The first one is district. Is that substantially the same or district, different?
Do we, do we have the one from, I, I, I'm not.
Ah, yeah.
You know, I'm not equipped to go through it point by point without having, I, I think that's a, a hard thing to do without having the previous one in front of us. But that's it. I don't think that I need to go through that point by point comparison to know that the amount of work that we have done over the past six, eight, however, I mean, basically since the day I walked into this board, we've been working on this. And what we started with and where we are now is substantially different. And I know we started with something that was different from what was at the town meeting last year, because even though I wasn't on the planning board, I was there and engaged in the process. So I, I don't, I guess I, I'm sort of hesitating to go through this matrix of comparison, point by point.
Yeah.
Because I don't have it in front of me. But when I think about what we have done in the process that we've gone through, and all of the presentations that we've heard, and all the questions that we've asked, and all of the thought that we have collectively put into this, and trying to come up with ways that we can assure ourselves that if there is a bylaw that goes into place, whether this Osgood project happens or not, that this is a smart way to cite any marijuana business in our town. I mean, we've just done so much work on this that regardless of the timing, regardless of having the bylaw from last year in front of us, I feel confident in what we're putting forward. And I feel confident that this is a much more thoughtful document that is significantly different than anything that existed in May.
So I agree with you on the whole. And I take your point that may not be useful to go point by point. But I would ask you to just consider the 10, rather than just the whole. And the 10 are district, purpose, boundaries, prohibited uses, permitted uses, location, dimensional, citing review, application requirement, and findings. Those are the 10 sections of the bylaw. So I do agree with you that on the whole, it's received a lot more work than it did last time. I'm, I'm still not, I, I mean, I think if we actually went through the result of that work, it, it would come out.
I mean, I'm looking, I'm looking at it now. So the last one, it, it's, it amended the medical marijuana bylaw only. So it didn't deal with any of the AMUs under the recreational. And it, it had a establishment of a district and boundaries, which I think were similar, but not the, were similar. Then had definitions. Then said that an app, copy of the application will be submitted to DBH. Said that.
Did they have any specific requirements of what went into the application, depending on the regular?
No, no. Then it had two more sections. Then there are two more paragraphs. It just said that all the application would be submitted to different boards and departments, and that it won't sell, and it won't sell marijuana to the public from its facility, depending on floor size. And that was it. So none of the, after our, like, first two pages, it didn't have any of the rest of that.
I think the crux was just what Jennifer said. It's, it's a substant, substantially more all-encompassing bylaw. I mean, it's not just whether this particular facility is a success or not a success. It covers way more ground than that. Like, if someone else comes in and says, I want to set up a shop here or there, it's already in place. We don't have to invent something new. For the other one, it was just very specific to one certain, specific facility. This is, this is, goes over the whole town. I mean, even when Ayton brought up the maps, let's look at the maps. Let's look at how many feet from, from schools or daycare centers. Couldn't go anywhere else. I mean, that wasn't explored the last time, the locations. I mean, that was an interesting exercise, you know? Where can it go? Where can anything go? Where could we sell or not sell retail? Where could we have research? Where could we have, have any kind of grow facility in town? Well, turns out, that's the only spot. But you didn't go through that before. That makes it substantially different. It's not going to come up again. This is in place. You can't have anybody come up again and say, oh, you know, we're going to propose something, you know, different. No, it's already been covered. How much more could we cover?
Right. I mean, I do agree with, I think in the end, you know, the fact that we're doing it a little earlier than we would like gives us a little bit of poise, of pause. I mean, I think that is all of our preference, that we would have waited a little bit longer. But I don't think that changes the substance of what we've done. We've done a very thorough job with, I think, really, it's owing 90% to you two, that we've ended up with something that I think is very comprehensive and very much of a model, I think, of what other towns want to do. I mean, and having said that, I think a person that came to the town meeting and looked at this could say, could go either two ways, is that this is a thorough process for controlling it, or somebody could still say, I don't want to have this in our community at all. And just, I just don't want to have this kind of thing in our community, period. And, and that's fine, too. I mean, that's, that's what the town meeting is about. So. So, having said that, we, I think we have to take two votes.
Yep. So I, I will just note that on the clean edited draft, so if you were to accept all these edits, there was formatting done, and a couple of other tables were resolved on this. Nothing substantive. And so I just want to make you aware that the, that word use was corrected. But there was a couple others. Nothing substantive. I've also added the warrant article language to the top of this. So the introductory paragraph and the explanation. And should you vote, move this to the Board of Selectmen, I would add the planning board as the sponsor.
Okay.
And put in the Board of Selectmen recommendation line item, as well as planning. They'll both be blank.
So before we vote, does anybody in the public want to make a further comment? I'd like to maybe get somebody who hasn't spoken yet first. Rosemary, if you want to go up first.
Ms. Riley, 65 Main Street.
You know, I'm listening to Attorney Rosen, to Attorney Teresi, and the board. And there seems to be one consensus here, that you all know that, that this is rushed. Attorney Rosen even agreed that maybe a bad storm, very cold January night, that we won't get the turnout that this deserves. So I'd like to remind you, maybe, maybe say from my own perspective. When I ran for office, or now when I meet new people who run for office, they'll say, what's your advice? I said, my advice is do no harm. So what is the harm in waiting for the people of North Andover, who've entrusted you to get a fair and honest hearing, that they've, as everybody said, they voted no in two different venues? They have a right to be heard. And if there is a storm, or if it's extremely cold, we might not get that fair hearing. This is not just a little moving of the line. This is huge. This is a huge, massive project that has, it's brand new, nationwide, statewide. Why are we rushing it? Do your fellow citizens the fairness?
But I think you're ascribing to the planning board a power and authority that they don't have. It would seem to me that it's more the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen could choose not to put the article on the warrant if they wanted. But all we're in the position of is, there is going to be a zoning, we think, a zoning article on the warrant. So the question is, should it be the article that the planning board has worked on, or, or not?
With all due respect to the chairman, and I think you know that I, actually, I think you all do good work. And thank you for all your, your hard work for not only this, but some of these other projects. That it's not just up to the Board of Selectmen. The planning board could vote no. They could vote no. We're not ready. We, we feel as though it needs a fair hearing in May. So again, I, I would just hate to have.
But you, you do understand, the planning board, let's say hypothetically, that we chose not to submit anything to the Board of Selectmen. The applicant will take the article and put it on the warrant. We could even recommend unfavorable action on it, as you suggest. The grounds of it would be sort of a little tough, since it's our document that we drafted, and that we think is, is substantially close to being in good order, but it's not 100% in good order. And then come back in May and say, for the same article, it's now good. And it, it's really not, you see, it puts us in a, in a position where our authority is actually narrow. And you're asking us to take, I think, a public policy role that is really outside of the jurisdiction of the planning board.
I guess I respectfully disagree, that I do think you also have a responsibility to make sure that it has a fair and honest hearing by our form of government town meeting, where the people get to have a say. And I do have concerns that perhaps a cold January night or a bad storm will limit that. And then what do you say to the people? Sorry. I think you all do good work. I think you're all extremely intelligent and put a lot of effort into it. So I just want to see it to the finish line and let the people of North Andover have a fair and honest say. Thank you.
If I could just say something in response, I think one of the things that motivates me, one, I think, I don't think I need much more time to work on this. I feel ready to put this before the people of North Andover. I feel 100% confident in the work that we've done. But regardless of whether this would be on the warrant, if we vote to send it to the Board of Selectmen tonight or not, and I do agree with you, Jennifer, this is going to be on it, regardless of what we do tonight. The other point is that there's already going to be a marijuana zoning bylaw on the warrant, regardless of this. There is another zoning bylaw that is going before the town in January at the special meeting to ban the citing of any marijuana. And frankly, you know, yes, the people of North Andover deserve a chance to take a vote on it. And that's why I think we put this in front of it. Because we have worked really hard on this, and we have been thoughtful. And it would be unfair, I think, to the people of North Andover, who, you know, it's been mentioned many times in these meetings, that the Osgood property, the, the Osgood project was shot down last, at the last town meeting, and it was rejected by the voters. But what is failed to be mentioned is that it got more than 50% of the vote. There was substantial support for that project in our town. And I think that if we're, if the town is going to have a special town meeting in January, which it is going to, and there's going to be a zoning bylaw on there about marijuana, in any event, regardless of what happens with our zoning bylaw that we have written, that the town deserves to have an opportunity to weigh in on both of them. And so for that reason alone, I think this, and also because I feel confident that we've done the work that needs to go into drafting this, I think this ought to be on it. So.
I, I agree that we've done a lot of thoughtful work. And I agree that it ought to go before the town. But the dilemma I have is, I'm not sure it will go before the town in an off-cycle town meeting in the dead of winter. I, I think it will go before a portion of the town. And that really worries me.
The same as the other article, though. I mean, if we remove this article, then the other article is there with the same small amount of the town. I mean, I don't think they see how that's fair either.
I'm not disagreeing with that. This is a dilemma for me, because I think we have been thorough. I think it should go before the town. And I am really concerned that the end of January will not be before the town. It will be before us a, a thin slice of people who have, you know, in advocacy, which I think is not a fair representation of the whole town.
So what are the options?
Well, that's what I'm asking.
So, well, that's my point is, the, the options are, if, let's say we go down the path of, that it looks like we're going to go down, we haven't voted yet, but we, we placed this article on the Board of Selectmen's agenda to be included in the warrant. So we go down that path. Because it's, okay. We go down that path, then we, we have our public hearing, and we could either choose to vote favorable or unfavorable action on, on that article. And then it comes, it will go to the town meeting, and will be voted on at the town meeting. If we choose to go the other path and say, we don't want to put anything on the agenda, the identical article will be placed on the warrant for the town meeting. We will have a public hearing, and we'll either choose, recommend favorable or unfavorable action. So, I mean, we're, we're in exactly the same situation. What's forced to hand is the fact that there is a special town meeting. But we can't get around the fact that this article is going to be on there, and we have to make a favorable or unfavorable recommendation prior to the meeting of whether we like it or not. So that's where the awkwardness is, we don't get to vote on the timing. That was my point to Rosemary before. As much as I wish we did, we don't, you know? So. Go ahead.
So the town meeting, so Angela Ranky, 24 Upland Street. So I first want to say that you guys have done a lot of work on this. I'm going to say something about the timing of the meeting, only because it's not the dead of winter. I mean, I'm Minnesotan. Like, we, you know, if we want to go do something, we're just going to haul out and go do it. So it's really important. What I've found is, is that I really didn't know about this. And I've been here for eight years, up until about three weeks ago, when somebody asked me to sign a petition. That was the first I'd ever heard of it. And I talked to my neighbors. They hadn't heard about it. So I know that in this world, in this cycle, in this room, it is really well-known. But some of the social media sites are out there are just getting started. There's one that is about pro marijuana, anti marijuana. And some of them are just getting up and running. And they're just having North Andover residents getting on there and clicking on there and learning about it. And so to have it by January, to have people come out and be here, you aren't just going to get a thin slice, because there's still a lot of residents who don't know about this, and are really learning about it, and are like, oh, like, where can I go? And I didn't know that this was going on. So I think to rush it, I mean, it was voted no once, my understanding. And so this is the second go-around. I think we need to give them ample time to continue to learn, to go to the town meetings, to let it resonate, to read about it. I mean, I travel 60% of the time. So for me to sit down and read an article while being a single mom of two children, you know, in the dead of winter, when I'm trapped in Ohio, you know, give me some time to let it sink in and resonate, and ask the questions that I need to ask. And that rushed me to make a decision by January 30th.
Right. But see, that's a argument I think you make in front of the Board of Selectmen, not in front of the, the planning board. Because under state law, if somebody wants to hold a special town meeting, and they get enough signatures, under state law, they're allowed to do it. I mean, and the, the applicant submitted a, a application with more than enough signatures to do that. So that's why we're here. It's not whether we'd like it or not, or wanted to do it or not.
But I've been arguing that. That's been, we had, you know, two people going May versus January.
Well, right. But the, the point is, because they've submitted this application for a special town meeting, by state law, you have to hold a special town meeting. You don't have any choice in the matter to hold a special town meeting. They have, it's under, within 45 days of the submitted application, they have to hold a special town meeting.
To have a vote.
To have a special town meeting. Yeah, it's, we don't have any control over that. That's state law.
He's right. He is right.
So, right.
So then why are we even talking about it?
Good. Bingo.
I mean, I've heard four different discussions. And I'm like, well, we are not educated. We're not educated. So, I mean, that's what we have in this town right now. It's just an uneducated population.
Well, that, so, I mean, to that point, what state law requires is a public hearing about the zoning amendment. So we're going to have three public hearings about the zoning amendment. I don't know if the applicant is going to do anything. The new regulations talk about a community outreach program before your, you know, you're applica, within the six months before your applications. I don't know if they're going to do something as well.
Excuse me. Can I interrupt for one second? Can you just state your name and address again?
Angela Ranky, 24 Upland Street.
Upland. Thank you.
Dan Leary, 26 Andover Street, with the project development team. So the, so the required community meeting that's required under the new regulate, the. So the required community meeting that's required under the new regulate, the draft regulations, will be noticed. There's a seven-day notice period, but it's similar to a Planning Board public hearing, except there's a seven-day notice period. And so we'll be covering that probably in about two weeks at Osgood Landing. So we'll put that in the newspaper here shortly and put that out all over social media.
Could you, when you do it, could you let us know and also let the public know the ways you're doing it? Because I strongly suggest more than just, I think, what you're going to do, more than just putting it in the Eagle Tribune, you know, anywhere on social media, not just on your site, but on any sites that agree with you or disagree with you, or, you know, anything where you think North Andover people, citizen or wherever, are going to get notice of it. And let people know that you've done that. I think that helps everybody.
Exactly. So, Mr. Goldberg, the one meeting you were talking about is the one required by the state. But in addition to that, we're going to have two other meetings. So we'll have a total of three open houses. Just one of those open houses will be the required public meeting. So we'll be messaging those out to everybody. And they're going to be at the facility, so much like you had the chance to walk in, meet the team, see the, you know, see how the setup's going to be, meet the architect, talk to the engineers. We'll be doing the same thing for the public.
Gene, a bunch of meetings ago, probably months ago now, we had talked at some point of when this came back up, there was going to, you know, we wanted to make sure that there was an opportunity for the public to engage and to come to the public hearings that were going to be held. And we sort of talked about tapping into the networks that were created for the master plan committee. Is there some way to do that and to sort of spread the word through whatever channels you guys have developed through that master plan committee about the public hearings that are coming up, so that there is an opportunity for the community to engage? I mean, if we've already got those lines of communication open, I don't see why we wouldn't take advantage of that. But I don't know how it works, and if that's-
Nope, I certainly can reach out to them and notify them of the public hearing date. It also will be published when we hit Town News about the public hearing, so I just wrote down social media about the public hearing as well. So printed in the Tribune, but I do anticipate putting it on Town News, which will go to the town's Twitter account as well as Facebook page.
Okay, great. Yeah, because I remember seeing things through that, too. Great.
Is it possible to also have people, if people want, to submit questions without going to the town meet, without going to the meet? Can people submit questions, not necessarily, but to you to have either read or something like that, so that we can, someone might not be able to, someone might work every Tuesday night, you know?
As you saw with the Varsity Wire list, they submit them all the time to planning, and they make it to the packet, so we can make point of-
But, I mean, is there any, can we have like, not so much a separate section of the town website, but a profile of this project on the, yeah, of the zoning here on the town website? And if people want to ask questions, maybe that's a way-
To say, "If you can't attend and want to submit a question, submit it, and it'll be, you know, asked or something."
Yeah, I mean, yeah, no harm in doing that.
I can talk to IT. I mean, we did that for the master plan, for the public forum, so I can talk to IT. See what you can do.
Tom? Go ahead.
Thanks. This is not about process, but my comments are about content, I think, because I think we've covered process quite a bit here. Peter, you pushed or asked a little bit about including an analysis of the impact on real estate values. And from my perspective, you all know what I do for a living. I think that's the significant element here. And to not call it out very deliberately and specifically in any bylaw as a requirement, I think is a huge mistake. It's the biggest impact, and all the people in the town who may want to come and speak on this are really mostly concerned about that. And with regard to how does somebody do that analysis, appraisals are done many, many ways. This does not just have to be comped to a marijuana facility in Colorado. It can be comped to any other massive monumental zoning change or change in use, like an airport, like a wastewater treatment plant, like an adult entertainment facility. Those are all things that can easily comp. They're monumental changes in a use, in an appearance and in a perception, and those things can be used as comps. It doesn't just have to be what happened in Colorado. And I think, whether we agree with that methodology or not, to require it of an applicant is critical, so that people can either agree with it and support it, or shoot holes in that analysis. And I think it's just a critical element, the most important element for most people in this town, is what's the value of my property? What's the salability of my property? And how does that impact it?
Did we require that for the wastewater treatment, so?
That was before my time.
Nothing was before your time. No, 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 no. I don't think so.
Mr. Salisbury might remember, but I don't.
Okay.
That's, go ahead.
Quick process question. Sorry. Back to process, Tom. I just want to be clear, because it sounds like you're not voting tonight to recommend this at all. My, right, is that correct? You're not voting to recommend? Okay.
We're voting on the-
Just to move it. Move the ball, whatever that may be. Is it the position of your board, and maybe Suzanne, you could jump in here, is it, if you vote unfavorable action on this article, your article or their article, if you don't go forward, can town meeting take this article up?
So, so this is, this is the consideration, is if there's a determination by this board that this is substantially different in character and a different zoning bylaw, then the question would become is whether or not that would require a favorable recommendation. Because if this is substantially different, then the argument could be made, or we'd have to consider whether or not that same Section 5 analysis would be in effect. Because if you have something that you make a determination is substantially different than what was before, then whether or not you would need to make that favorable recommendation.
And if this board decided not to act on it, and they, the proponents, put the article forward, this board would in effect be the gatekeeper of that, to determine whether it was substantially different and if you gave it unfavorable report. So you guys are the gatekeeper in a lot of ways, John.
Well, let me, let me just clarify that. So the Planning Board, as you've already determined all along, and as I discussed in the memo, when this issue first came up, the Planning Board is the gatekeeper to determine whether this is of the same character or whether it's substantially different or not. So that initial decision is the gatekeeper, whether it's your article or any article, because it is a zoning. If it's the same exact zoning amendment that comes back to you, then it's essentially barred under the statute. But if it's something substantially different, then, and that determination is made.
But the difference is, though, is if the proponents submit it, and they vote unfavorable action on it, then town meeting can't even consider it. Is that correct?
I believe it is, but I would have to look into that, because you're asking me to speculate on something that may or may not occur, and in what posture that would be in. I would not want to answer, give you a definitive answer right now.
All right. Thank you very much.
I have another question about it.
Sure, go ahead.
What is the purpose of the explanation note on the final version, not the red line, on page 17?
The actual one, if you could.
Yeah. Oh, no. It's this thing, yeah. It's at the end.
Who wrote this, I guess?
I did.
Because I raised earlier this dilemma, which you asked, not unreasonably, what's the alternative? There's gonna be a special town meeting. We don't control that date. So I've been thinking about your question, and I'm wondering if the answer to the dilemma might be somewhere in this explanatory note. And right now, I sort of read that as sort of the normal jargon that goes along with one of these. But maybe there's an opportunity for the board to further the explanation, so that people who read this, because, I guess, put it bluntly, part of my worry is that if the board votes this to go forward, people who are not familiar with the details of the problem, of the process, could conclude wrongly, "Oh, Planning Board's all for it." Whoa, 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 wait a minute. We don't know if we're all, if we vote to send this forward to the Board of Selectmen, we are not saying we're all for it, not yet. And why shouldn't the explanatory note make that distinction? And maybe that's the extent of addressing this dilemma that otherwise is beyond our control. To say that by forwarding this to the Board of Selectmen, the Planning Board has not yet voted on whether to support or not.
But isn't there something that comes underneath it that says Planning Board recommendation?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's, this is actually-
This is for the benefit of voters.
This is, yeah, this is just the first version of it. But I think what it, what it comes down to is, if you roll the clock forward and we're actually, you know, going to town meeting with this, probably the way the process would work, because it would be an article sponsored by the Planning Board, that we would, we would tell them what our recommendation was favorable or unfavorable. But then what we would do is, we would explain the article. I mean, I would expect that we would have three or four slides that would explain in some level of detail what we're planning on doing, and what's in there, and what's not in there, and why we did what we did. I mean, it shouldn't be too long, because we, you know, we don't want to boil the ocean. But we would, we would get a chance to explain anything we wanted.
No, no, like last year, when you got up on behalf of the Planning Board and explained the position on-
Yeah, the, yeah.
On that article.
But I think in this case, because it's more detailed, we would probably want to work off some slides.
And I just want to go back to what we discussed when we first started talking about this agenda item. So as Jennifer said, it will have Planning Board recommendation and Board of Selectmen recommendation, and I will add, sponsored by the Planning Board, if you choose to send this to the Board of Selectmen, to be included in the warrant. When the warrant prints, it will say for the Planning Board to be made at town meeting. However, the Planning Board report, which gets printed at a later date, once you go through the public hearing process, that Planning Board report would print with your recommendation.
Gene, is there a letter that goes with it? Like, "Dear Board of Selectmen," enclosed be fine, you know, for your consideration, or we would just send it?
We would just typically send it.
I was just, you know, just, there was normally a letter, you could say, you know, "We're not taking a position on this yet. We're just asking to put it on the warrant." But I think it'll be clear from-
I'm not sure that it will be clear to people who aren't familiar with the process. And I think an explanatory note here in that section, just saying the Planning Board has not yet taken a position, just like you just now said, and then below that-
Yeah, I just don't think it can, I don't think it can be part of this. I think it could be part of a separate letter saying, "Dear Board of Selectmen, we're asking to put it on the warrant."
This is subject to a lot of editing. I think what we should do is, we should end up with a version of this that everybody feels comfortable with, that explains the context of the decision, what we've made, what we've not made. And I think we ought to reemphasize that point as we begin the public hearing process on, you know, whatever we have, that-
So that typically gets submitted with the warrant article to the Board of Selectmen to be included in the warrant, which is going to print ahead of your Planning Board report.
That's why I'm saying, because this is going to be printed ahead of our report, this will be printed and available for view. That's why it ought to say, "The Planning Board has not yet taken a position."
Right.
But I think it will say that.
It will say that.
It will say, "The Planning Board's recommendation to be-"
To be made at town meeting.
Yeah.
So why can't it say, "The Planning Board has not taken a position. The Planning Board's recommendation will be made at town meeting?"
Well, we could do that. It's a version of what we, you know, usually they use a short version of that, but we could say that explicitly, right? There's no harm in saying that, just adding that to the note.
I just, you know, we're familiar with the process. We know what, we know what those blank lines mean. But I think it's, can easily be taken by people who are not familiar with the process as an endorsement before the endorsement is actually made, because it's printed before the report.
I understand this is just a summary of this portion of the bylaw, so there's a quick snapshot. Now, maybe there's something to be added to say something along the lines of, something that no bylaw is permissive, this is, I guess you could say restrictive. We went through that number of months ago, and the fact that, you know, in the absence of no marijuana bylaw, then it really, the existing bylaws are in place. It's just like this was some kind of hydroponic farm or something. This, this helps control this industry. So maybe something like that could be.
I don't ever recollect getting a warrant before the, whenever it was available, before any town meeting, special or not, that didn't say whether the Board of Selectmen voted up or down, or the Planning Board voted up and down, or if it was financial, whether the Finance Committee voted up or down. It's always on there. Or if it, or if there's no vote up or down, it says, you know, "Recommendation will be heard at town meeting." I mean, it's, right? Every, every single one, when it was, always, it's always on there. It will be on there, and it always is.
It's just not on there right now.
Yeah.
But it will be.
Yeah.
Right. That will be, and it'll be right under-
And it'll be right, it just seems really repetitive to put it in the box and then right-
And then right below it, it'll be right-
And in the box, if it were to say, "The Planning Board has not taken a position on this," that's handed out at town meeting, as well as the report, which the report will indicate you have taken a position. So it'd be kind of contradictory. Most people pick up the warrant on their way in, or they're going to read it on the website potentially, but they're going to pick up both of those documents at the way in.
I understand Peter's point that when this comes to vote, making the voters explicitly clear on what they're voting for.
Yep.
Yeah.
So I understand-
Some of it is the explanation that we provide. It's, you know, the reason why we did this is, there was a vote last year at town meeting. Planning Board was concerned at that time that there wasn't ample time to have a satisfactory bylaw. This is what we've done since then. These are the people we've talked to. You could even say, "Yeah, we wish we had a little bit more time, but we're here now, and this is what we recommend."
I think words to that effect, and maybe saying that in the event the town approves these uses, a bylaw is necessary. And this is it. But it's conditioned upon what the town decides.
So, yes, sir?
Ed Lynch, 137 Haymeto. I've been coming to these meetings so that I could be fully educated to make my decision. And I'm frustrated, because I realize this is a hot potato for everybody. I realize that our selectmen are here tonight because it's a hot potato for them. But it's your job, your job, to make sure that the public is educated, so that they can make an educated decision. And what I'm frustrated by is, we spent 32 minutes arguing about whether we could move this to May because of a potential snowstorm and ice storm, which didn't need to be discussed, isn't, shouldn't have been discussed. So my suggestion, as a sales and marketing guy, is why don't you take the top 10 questions people have, real estate value? I just looked up online, sitting in my seat, there's at least a dozen articles about California, Colorado, other states. There's an article that's already been written about another growth facility in the state of Massachusetts that's being built, and some of the economic impact that they've done, research they've done. Let's just do some research. And then let's share that, whether it's, whether it's home values, it's crime, it's, you know, who's, who's on the board and what are their roles going to be if this is approved? You know, what are the people that are against this? What are their role? Give me top 10 questions and the answers. I think you will find that come the 30th, you will have a great turnout if you socialize it and you explain it to people, because if this document goes out, I can tell you, having read it, it makes very little sense to the layman of the world that is just trying to understand, "How is this going to affect me?" So my comment is, let's educate people, because that's what you guys are here to do, and they're here to do, is to make sure the public is educated. Because then we'll make a good decision, for or against. But currently, we have, we haven't done that. So, thank you.
Well, you have three meetings coming up to delve into those-
But, like I said, no one knows. But like I said, no one knows. I do, because I came to the first one, and I decided to be here every time.
Right, but those only got scheduled the last week?
No, I understand, but still, I just know that.
Now, and props to you for coming to, I mean, seriously, for paying attention and for actually being here, because --
I might speak some at law.
We're not going to say. But, you know, we have been discussing this since, ever since the first time. I mean, I'm new to the board, right? Coming since the end of June, or maybe early July, and this has been on our topic. So, I don't know how many meetings we've had. I mean, we have been discussing this, and discussing it, and discussing it, and discussing it, and it is, it's unfortunate that a lot of people aren't, you know, plugged in or tuned in to what's going on, major things in our town and in our government, but there are some things that garner huge amount of people here. I mean, we just saw it just recently, the issue with the cell tower. We have tons and tons and tons of people showing up for that. I mean, people do pay attention, but they pay attention to the things that they think really impact them and affect them immediately, right in front of their faces, and one of those things is the cell tower. I mean, you see that. It's in my backyard, it's in my, there it is, right there. Our facility at 1600 Osgood Streets, I think, for a lot of people, is a little bit more abstract. It doesn't seem that immediate. And even though we've been telling people over and over and over again, this is, we have, our Board of Selectmen has discussed it many, many times. This has come before the finance committee. It even came before the Board of Health. I mean, it's become, come before like every major board, we've had a discussion on this facility going into 1600 Osgood Street. So, the fact that people are unaware, I can't say that the boards are to blame for not getting information out there. There isn't a heck of a lot more that we could be doing day to day, meeting to meeting, to put this out there. Anybody who goes to the town website knows they can hook up to Mr. Mailer's tweets and his email messages out. He does it in as many ways as he can. I think he's on Instagram. I mean, every board meeting, you can get every agenda, the minutes for all, every meeting across town, just by plugging in. People don't plug in. I don't know how much more a board like this can do to get people in. Should we stop trying? No, but it depends on the topic.
Fair enough. Well put. I think at this point, we've had enough discussions, and we're all exhausted. I think we have to make two motions. The first motion is a recommendation to put this article or to rec, how would you phrase it, to, for the selectmen to put this article as amended on the warrant.
To write that.
Is it two articles?
To include. To move the articles to the Board of Selectmen for inclusion in the special town meeting warrant.
And so, that's all three articles, right?
Right, so you haven't even looked at the map article yet, which I would encourage you to look at that.
Okay.
The citizen petition, right?
We don't have to --
No.
Oh, that's already there? So, it's just the zoning, the map article?
Right, and you could do these individually, so you can vote to move the one we just discussed, but I do have a question regarding the explanation. Do you want me to just leave it blank at this point in this middle?
I would say, "Leave it as is."
I would leave it as is.
Yeah, and I think we can edit it later.
If you need to edit it, you can edit it after, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so, do you want me to read that motion?
So, the map is the second one. What's the third one?
Just, I thought the citizen one, we didn't, we don't need to do anything on that one.
All right, you just have two. You have the zoning bylaw, section 813, and then you have that map amendment.
Which would be both sponsored by the planning board, and that's why we're asking you to motion to move them.
Right, no, that's fine. Do we need to have any discussion on the map? Okay, so then, does somebody want to make a motion to that effect for the text and then for the?
Yeah, I'd make a motion to have the planning board sponsor and move along to the Board of Selectmen to be placed on the warrant article for the January 30th special town meeting. The text of the draft marijuana bylaw that is before the board as the clean version presented for this meeting.
And amended.
Right, which is 171227 warrant article with formatting as clean, with the amendments discussed at today's meeting.
Okay, so that's the motion. Somebody want to second that?
I'll second.
So, any final discussion? If none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? And opposed? Okay, so it's four to one to move it forward. The second is the map, so do you want to make that same?
Make a motion to include the zoning map, which, amendment which has been included in the packet for today's meeting, to be forwarded to the Board of Selectmen, to be placed on a warrant article for the special town meeting of January 30th, 2017.
Okay.
2018, thank you. We're going to go back in time.
I'll second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? If none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, so four to one again. So, then we have, the further thing is, do we find that the article that we're asking being moved is a substantial change from the prior one that was presented at the town meeting?
Do you want to --
So, is that?
Of like character or a substantial change?
It can be, it can be of similar character.
Okay, it's of substantially different character, right?
Yes, right.
Yeah, okay. So, would somebody like to make that motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion that the two articles that we have just voted to move to the Board of Selectmen for the January 30th, 2018 special town meeting are of substant, are substantially different, and of substantially different character than the marijuana articles, which I believe were articles nine, 10, and 11 of the town meeting in 2017.
Yeah.
And these are substantially different, based on all of the discussion that we had earlier, that they are in fact substantially different.
So, motion made?
I'll second.
Second? Any further discussion? If none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Opposed.
Peter?
I'm in favor.
Okay, so we have four, four in favor and one opposed. A lot of different opposed, so there we are. So, do we need to discuss anything else, or we'd be exhausted? Everyone in the audience at this point. Yes, Mrs. Salisbury, if you want to get up and speak.
Yeah, a couple things. I'll toss out the first. Charlie, if you could identify yourself for the record.
I can. My name is Charles Salisbury. I live at 301 Johnson Street. The board was addressed with a letter from former selectman Wakeman about the process by which she found that the advertising of a proposed public hearing for next third, next January 9th seemed to be insufficiently prepared for public consumption at the time it was done, and was wondering what you were going to do about that. I don't know whether you in fact have set that hearing. You might have done the work tonight that would allow that to go forward if it were advertised for the first time tonight with the information you have available. But I think you're seriously, she seriously deserves a response to that question that was raised. Apart from that, I really want to talk about the thing you've got down here and haven't addressed tonight at all, and that's the citizen petition. And I guess I've watched the presidential election of 2016 put the marijuana question and all its 10 pages of text in front of the voters, and they all said, "Yes, statewide." But some 90 towns within the 351 said no, North Andover being one of them, and the law itself had text in it which allowed local control by a voice of the voters to limit the number even down to zero of the various kinds of marijuana establishments. And as of last June, some 30 communities had put forward bylaws to essentially say, "Thank you, but not in our town." Those bylaws prepared, were prepared by planning boards in those other towns, and they did it between November of 2016 and the spring town meeting season of 2017. North Andover did nothing. And I guess I see now that what's been going on is, in fact, you've been consumed by a well-funded consortium telling you that you need to do this in order to have a success at 1600 Osgood Street. And the drumbeat is incessant. The folks here who are addressing you tonight are all well-funded and are dependent on this being their future economically, and would like to have you do it, and promise not to besmirch your town too much, but North Andover would be different from North Reading, Linfield, Lexington, the 30 odd towns which we can nominate where planning boards have been worrying about controlling it in their towns. I don't know whether you've talked to an association of planning boards of other towns, but I assume that you must have some sense as to what's going on, and was either intent on this board to say, "We don't want to do it now, we'll do it later," or intent to say, "Not for our town. We are different. We're going to do things differently because we have a facility that's very different." I would intend that you ought to think long and hard about what Mr. Zarico had to say. If you were talking to the zoning board of Foxwoods, Connecticut, a few decades ago, when they saw an opportunity, you might find that they would second think some of what they were doing, because although families go and locate throughout Connecticut, for the benefit of raising families in an environment that's very comfortable for everyone, I'm not sure many of them head to Foxwoods. And I think North Andover has benefited over the last several decades of families who have come here and become part of a very vibrant community, who when saying, "Linfield, North Andover," Andover's going to vote on this the night before we do, and I suspect they will do the equivalent of the citizen petition, you ought to think as to what the future of our community is going to be and what you're doing to it. Thank you.
Can I just say on process, I, I've not really said much in terms of, you know, I've seen these letters saying, and these are a well-funded group, and these comments that this has been rushed, or that there's not enough information out there, and I really strongly disagree with that. Like Chris said, we've been talking about this since June at this board, who's been in front of us, frankly, I don't think it matters at all, the information that's been important, and we are doing more than is required by law. Law requires one public meeting, we're having three. The law requires 45 days, once a special town meeting is set. So, it was set pretty much at the very end of that. Would we have wanted not to have a special town meeting? I think yes, but we're doing everything that the law requires and more. And so, I disagree that it's been rushed, I disagree that there hasn't been public process, and I strongly encourage anyone who has an opinion about this to come to the meeting on the 9th, to come to the meeting on the 16th, to come to the meeting on the 23rd, to ask your questions, whether you want to before, or after, or during, to listen, to go to the applicants and ask them tough questions. That's what we've been doing for six months. And so, I encourage people to do that, and if you have comments online, go for it. I've read the comments, and we can't respond to them. That's not inappropriate for our board, for us individually to be responding to individual people like that, because of the open meeting law and things like that. We respond here. So, I would just say that the public meetings were set last meeting, I believe. We already set for the 9th, the 16th, and the 23rd, and I don't think that it was rushed or without the process required by law, so.
And I just would weigh in, and I would concur with that, the fact that the public notice for those public hearings does comply with the law. The purpose of noticing a public meeting is to, or a hearing, is to allow people notice that if they want to come and object to something that is being proposed, there's only minimum proposed, they get notice to come to the time and place of what is being proposed. And that certainly happened, because you got the email complaining about the lack of notice. So, as soon as you get an email complaining about the lack of notice of a public hearing, it's cured. There is no defect in your public notice, and that's what that process is for. So, in this instance, I would say that the board's process and noticing those meetings is completely fine, and it absolutely complies with the law.
Hi, CJ Gangee, 53 Chestnut. In regards to that, the, excuse me, the notice of the meeting, Mass. General Law, Section 5, states that notice of the time and place of such hearing, of the subject matter sufficient to identification, and of the place where texts and maps thereof may be inspected, shall be published in the newspaper. The meeting was published, but these documents were not available on the 26th of December, when Wendy Wakeman, excuse me, went to, went to look at them. She was able to get them, because she's a former selectman and she knows how the building works, but your average Joe Blow off the street would not have been able to get these documents.
They're all available online.
They were not.
The documents have been available online.
I'm sorry, I have to disagree. It took, she did not walk out of here with those documents. She was emailed the documents after the fact.
But she has them now.
She has them now, but the average citizen that walked in the building and said, "Ooh, can I have those documents?" They weren't available here. I mean, I see silence, but.
I don't, everything that's been put before the board has been online in the minute. That's how I access them. I actually don't look at this stuff, I mean, I look at it, but I'm looking at it literally online right now.
Right now, not last week.
No.
No, but it was before, as soon as, one last time when we met, things were updated, and those were provided as soon as they were done, but every draft of these bylaws has been online. Every article that has been presented has been online. Every email from citizens, including the one about not getting notice, has been put online within, before the next meeting, so.
I printed this out after the last meeting, this morning.
Right, so I appreciate your vigor, and we can disagree, but I'm struggling with that one.
I mean, because at this point, we're having the hearing on the 9th, we're having the hearing on the 16th, we're having the hearing on the 23rd. Yeah, in the ideal world, it would be good to spread it out, probably.
Well, I think that goes to the rush nature of this whole --
But that's a, but the point is, we're having three public hearings, the, for the applicant in Osgood Landing is also having a series of public meetings, so there should be ample opportunity for somebody to review it and see whether it's appropriate. I mean, in the end, there will be some people that will get into the detail of whether, you know, one specific piece of language or condition is appropriate or not, but I think most people, as Mr. Salisbury suggests, will make a determination based on whether they want to see the use at all. I mean, that's really what it's going to come down to, and I, you know, that's really then where it's going to be, and so.
Thank you.
Okay, so, this is a very difficult contentious topic. I mean, I think that, I appreciated all the comments and feedback, and you know how respectful folks have been. It's not an easy decision. We've deliberated a lot. We've done, I think, the best that we could, but we did get some ideas of things that we could do in addition, so thank you all for your input and suggestions. So, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.